Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
August 10th meeting of the Aiken City Council. We're going to open, as we always do, with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to recognize Ms. Cave Broll, if she would, for our prayer. And then I'm going to ask our chief if he'd be willing to lead us in our pledge afterwards. So if you're so inclined, please feel free to stand.
If you'd like to join me, and we'll say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The benedict is the kingdom, and the glory, and the glory forever. Amen.
Thank you for that. Chief, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'm going to go over our guidelines for meetings. But before I do, let me, first of all, say a big thank you to our mayor pro temp, Councilwoman Price, who, in my absence, did a tremendous job.
She did.
Running and giving everyone a fair opportunity to speak on some tough issues. And certainly appreciate that. And I'd like an opportunity just to say thank you to our friends, staff, and council members, but also an amazing number of citizens, many of you here who dropped notes. As many of you know, I ended up diagnosed or positive for COVID. And what a wonderful city it is that people care, they write a note, they check on you. And I just want to say thank you to a wonderful city. What a privilege it is to serve a city like Aiken. Very fortunate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're glad you're back, Mr. Mayor.
I am glad to be back. Thank you for that. Our guidelines for Aiken City Council meetings: Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined honorable and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is expected. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, if you'll raise your hand, I will certainly recognize you. If you're recognized, please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue, and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. And we appreciate that so much for your willingness to be here today and be a part of our meetings and give us information so we can make more informed and better decisions. With that, I'd like to recognize our mayor pro temp for additions or deletions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions or deletions to our August 10th, 2020 agenda. And therefore, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented to Aiken City Council.
Very good. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I see.
Thank you, Councilman Walsh. Appreciate that. All those in favor of the minutes as presented, please raise your hand. And as unanimous, thank you. We now move down to section on our agenda of presentations. We have presentations by the Citizen Review Board, which I think we have most of our members here. Yes. I'm sorry. Minutes, forgive me. Judge, I was so excited about you being here, I was just trying to jump ahead. The minutes were given out to council before our meeting for their review. Is there a motion at this time to accept the minutes as presented?
I so move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Broll, we appreciate that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please raise your hand. And as unanimous. Now, counselor.
Right.
Okay. All right. We now move down to presentations, and I would like to ask, I think Judge is going to come up first, Judge Dangler, who is now the current chair. But we have a lot of folks here who have worked very hard to make our Citizen Review Board the success it is in our community and the model that a lot of cities around the southeast have reached out to us to look at this model. So Judge, thanks for being here. I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. First of all, procedurally, can I remove the mask while I'm speaking?
Uh huh, yes.
There's so many rules that I have.
Yes.
Okay. I'll stay away from the microphone, according to what I read here. Well, good evening. My name is Judge John Dangler, and I have the honor at the moment to be the chairman of our Aiken Citizens Review Board. How I wanted to present this evening was just a little bit of my background. We're going to talk a little bit about the goals and objectives of the Citizens Review Board, some current statistics. We have our vice chair, and we actually have all members. We have nine members currently, and they're all here this evening. After our vice chair, I'll ask any one of them if they wish to come up and make a few comments, sharing their background and anything else they may wish to say about the Citizens Review Board. I'm a retired State Superior Court judge. I've been living in Aiken almost 11 years. I came from New Jersey. Most of my career was in Morris County, New Jersey. And for those may or may not be familiar, we're in the northern part of the state. We're about 35 miles west of New York City, population about 500,000, and the area about third the size of Aiken County. Prior to being on the Superior Court, I had the opportunity to serve as the county prosecutor for that county. I did that for a number of years. I was the chief law enforcement officer for 39 police departments in the county. My office had about 200 detectives, assistant prosecutors, support staff. Before all that, I spent 20 years in the private practice of law, during which time I also served as a municipal prosecutor for three different police departments. I've been on the board now for two years, and it's an honor to be part of a group of very talented and dedicated citizens. The Citizens Review Board was first established by the mayor and council in 2016. They had a few cases heard at that time, but they really got rolling in 2017 up to the present. I would also share with you, we've had so much doom and gloom news. I don't think you turn wherever you want, and there's things about the virus and how it's impacted everyone. On a positive side, I'd like to share with you that I believe the citizens of Aiken are being well-served by the members of the Citizens Review Board. We are adhering to the goals and objectives, and I think the citizens need to know that they are looked upon with respect. And I also find that the men and women of the Aiken Department of Public Safety are also well-serving the citizens of Aiken as well. We are committed to respect, accountability, transparency, and we're trying to ensure that there is professional and accountable law enforcement for all of the citizens. We review every case. Many people will file a complaint, it's looked upon by the police department, and that's it, and there's nothing else. Our board looks at every complaint because we want to see, is there a pattern of conduct that troubles us, that we need to sit down with the chief and find out how they're dealing with that? We look at, again, all the cases. We break our board up into panels so that the load of looking at all these cases is spread out. 2019, we had 18 complaints were filed by citizens. And what happens procedurally, a citizen is upset with the way they were treated, in their mind, by a police officer or police officers. They're advised that if they're not satisfied with what happened, they can file a request for the Citizens Review Board to look at their case. Before that happens, the chief will assign that to senior officers within the department, captains, tenants. They will look at all the video cam, the body cam, any information they have. They'll talk to the officers, and they will certainly talk to the person who has brought the complaint, or sometimes it's more than one. When that is done, they will make a ruling. And they may find one of their officers was out of line, that he or she used excessive force, or they were very impolite and rude when they didn't have to be. Other times, they find the officer acted in a proper manner, and that when the citizen who filed the complaint got the look at the video, oftentimes, they would tend to agree. If they're still not happy and satisfied, and they feel there's more information, they allow the Citizens Review Board to take another look at it and see if we agree or don't agree. There were four cases out of the 18 that were filed in 2019. The department did find that there was improper conduct, perhaps use of force was inappropriate, and the department dealt with those officers. Sometimes the department lets the officer go. He or she is on probation, and this has been the final straw, and they're not going to put up with that conduct. Sometimes there needs to be new training for that officer so that that conduct doesn't get repeated, and we're advised of what the department is doing. So far this year, in 2020, we have 15 complaints, and we have two of those cases have been sustained, again, in which those complaints were justified. Now, those numbers have to be looked, the department, I would guess, deals with thousands of cases every year. So in some respects, it speaks well for the work that's being done by Department of Public Safety. I think we have an obligation, of course, to be neutral and look at it on behalf of the citizens, but we also have to remember what the job of the officers are. It's been my experience, and I've often said this, being a police officer or fireman is one of those only jobs. Most of you have jobs, you're in real estate, finance, banking, whatever you do, you're probably going to go home the end of that day after your work is done. Your policeman or fireman never are assured that you're going home that day. And they know that when they're out there on the road, and we appreciate the work that they're doing. That really, in a nutshell, is what we're all about. As I said, these are dedicated people that I'm fortunate to work with. I'm going to now introduce Ms. Carmen Landy, who is our vice chair, and she can talk a little bit about her background and what she sees happening with Citizens Review Board. Carmen?
Thank you, Judge, and good evening, Carmen.
Good evening, everybody. You can see my teeth through my mask, can't you? I'm smiling. I'm smiling. I wanted to just get up, and when the judge offered us an opportunity to speak, what I wanted to just say to you is that this Citizens Review Board allows an opportunity for people who are not, do not feel included in the system, and people that feel disenfranchised to be heard. And so I want to thank you, as the city of Aiken, for even in times that felt a little bit trying for us, that you decided to establish this group, to hold a mirror up to yourselves and open the window up to the community so that we can see exactly how things work. And that people who are not law enforcement, this is a group of people from all over the community who are not in position to attack the city of Aiken in law enforcement, but also not in a position to say that everything that law enforcement does is right, which is a really great thing about the board. We disagree sometimes. We're friendly, though. We really like each other. But we disagree sometimes on things, and we have some really healthy debates. And we all come from a different perspective. And so what it does is it lends a very, it casts a really great light on the specific issues that our community might be dealing with, and ways that we, as a city, as community members, and even as law enforcement, because it's not always law enforcement, not always a law enforcement issue. Sometimes it's a mental health issue. Sometimes it's, but all of those things are things that need to be highlighted so that we can serve our community better in the city of Aiken. So I just want to thank this board for bringing us together. I've been the vice chair for a couple of years now, and I've been on the board since its inception. We've watched it develop and grow, and I just really appreciate the fact that we have not diminished our standing and not diminished our purpose for this community, but that we continue to press on and do the good work. We're not, I know Aiken's not perfect, but we're working towards getting better. And I think that we are lucky in Aiken. As David Jamison says, we're lucky enough, right? But we're lucky and blessed to be in a city that even cares to hear from its people and even listens and processes their complaints. So I feel at a great advantage to be a part of this group. And did I say, you said my first and last name? Just in case for the record.
I'm not your address.
No, I'm not giving my address. Carmen Landy, and I'm the CEO at Helping Hands, which is one of the reasons why I'm here on this board. But I'm an active citizen in Aiken, and so I'm really happy to be here.
Thank you, Carmen. And thank you for your service on the board.
Can we have the judge ask the rest of the board members to come forward and stand with him, please?
We have all nine members that are here. If I could ask you, some wish, might want to make a few comments, or some may not. Yep. All right. We have Mr. Clark McCants.
Can we ask him to introduce himself?
Clark McCants, one of our local attorneys, well-respected, big help to us.
I want to add on what they can talk about. I promised the judge I wasn't going to say anything. I promised it. I apologize. I'm Clark McCants. I live on Calhoun Place in Aiken. I've also, like Carmen, have been part of this board since its inception. And she recalls an Ann from the start, Jody, Katrina, Jeff, Mr. Gollman, James Gollman, anybody else. We looked at a lot of models for our board, and we weren't really happy with them. We kind of worked from scratch. We got all the basic ingredients and put something together that we thought was tailored for our community. And we worked very hard at it. Jody and I, in particular, a lot of hours spent crafting bylaws and procedures and whatnot. And our design, because it was in response to an unfortunate event, was create a board that serves the citizens. You know, public safety, and members of public safety are citizens too.
Yes.
And our design was designed that helped everybody. It helped the citizens that had a complaint, and it also helped public safety, I like to think, helped them through the process of understanding. And maybe there's some citizens who've been trained up in this particular area to look over what they've done. And I hope the chief has appreciated that over the years, that our objective is to make the relationships between the citizens and public safety a better one. What I really want to say, though, in light of recent events in this country and in the world, I am absolutely amazed that more communities do not have some model in place. And I think if that were the case, we'd get rid of a lot of the issues and problems that we have. If law enforcement, through a board like ours, communicated and worked with citizens, I think it'd help a lot. That's all I'm going to say, Judge. Thank you for listening. I appreciate having the opportunity to be part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clark.
Thank you.
James Gollman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Gollman. Great article in the paper.
Katrina Broadwater?
You need to hear these backgrounds, though.
Background. Just say who you are and what you do.
I am a rare breed. I am. I am. I am an Aikenite for 78 years, and I love our city, and I love the opportunity to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gollman.
James Broadwater?
Hello, everybody. My name is Dr. Katrina Broadwater. I'm a, I have grown up, lived in this community, loved this community, operate two businesses in this community. It's nothing more than I love than to serve on this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Broadwater.
My name is Ann Dix. I stay at 314 Jehoshad Drive, Aiken, South Carolina. I am very pleased to be with, on this board, to be able to work with public safety, because I can remember when Aiken had a neighborhood service department that was made to develop relationships between communities in Aiken and the public safety department. Chief Barranco and his staff and my community have been very, very good and very responsive, and that gives me an overview of how we interact with them. And the one thing that I have discovered, if you treat people with respect and that they are important, then you can have a dialogue with them.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Ann. Good evening, Jody.
Good night. My name is Jody Dugan. I'm not an Aikenite. I moved here in 2005 when I retired as a journalist in Washington, DC. I spent most of my life in Washington, DC, so this is very different for me. I have always been a volunteer my entire life, even when I was working. I made sure that both of my daughters became volunteers, and they are making sure that their children become volunteers. I think it's one of the most important things we do for our community and for other people in the community. I was a journalist my whole career. I ended my career as an assistant to the president of the National Wildlife Federation, which, to me, is a fabulous organization. I don't really like wildlife that much, but it was a great job. I worked for at least five different political candidates over time and loved that work. And I have been doing some political things here in Aiken. My main focus is the arts. I love the arts. I have been in five plays at the Playhouse. I love the Playhouse. I'm also on the Board of Directors of Aiken Performing Arts. And I love that we are able, in this small community, to bring world-class entertainment and put on shows that we put on here. It's absolutely amazing that that happens. So I just want to say thank you very much for this beautiful city. It is my home now. Even after 15 years, I started to feel a little like a native, and I love it. And I do think the work that we're doing on this board is extremely important and worthy. And everybody on this board is outstanding.
All right.
I'm probably the least outstanding.
No. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Ms. Ross.
I appreciate being here. Unfortunately, I am not an Aikenite, but I did the next best thing, and I married one.
All right.
I am an attorney for, in the Augusta Law Department. I have been a prosecutor and a criminal defense attorney, and I am committed to the work of criminal justice reform. And I am happy to see that this mayor, this city council, Chief Barranco, have been committed to accountability. And it is a great board. I believe other communities should model their boards after this one, and it's something that Aiken should really be proud of, and I'm proud to be a part of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
I think I know him. I think I know him, y'all. That's my son-in-law.
Couldn't recognize me by the mask.
My name is Mike Beckner, and I'm the most recent member of the board, other than the judge. I wasn't one of the original members. I replaced somebody who came off the board. I've been on the board for three years, and I can only echo what everyone else has said about the importance of the board and the fulfillment, I think, that we all get by being intermediaries, if you will, between public safety and the community. Not intermediaries in a negative sense, but rather enablers, I guess, and being able to put forward a positive message. My personal background, my wife, Laura, and I moved here 10 years ago from Falls Church, Virginia, which, as many of you know probably, is a bedroom community for Washington, DC. I spent 35 years with federal government. I was a special agent with the Diplomatic Security Service of the US Department of State. We had six overseas assignments where I was the chief law enforcement and security advisor to the ambassador at the US Embassy where we were. I take my hat off to chief and to city leaders and to the citizens of Aiken. I didn't know public policing could be so difficult under certain circumstances. And I've learned a lot about community policing and community affairs and the relationship between people. Living overseas, you miss out a lot being an American citizen. And I like to tell people that Aiken is now the hometown that I never had. So I'm really proud to be here, and I thank you all for the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mayor and council, that concludes the presentation we had. We weren't going to do any PowerPoints and so forth. I thought sometimes we wanted you to see the folks, the diverse group that does serve on this board. If there are any questions, comments, we will certainly take them. We know you've got a busy agenda, so.
Judge, I'd like to make a comment, if I could, that from the inception of this group, and Clark is right, there were some models of CRBs that we brought in and looked at as a group, and this group said, this doesn't fit Aiken. And I'm going to tell you the dedication. I know Clark, Jody, everybody who was there, Ms. Dix, Jeffrey, just Katrina, just the commitment of this board to make sure that we got it right. I mean, it was amazing for me, and I would come in and maybe get an update here and there, but it was, this board was just committed to making sure we got it right. And, you know, I think our citizens appreciate, and you're right, our law enforcement appreciates also, and we're a better city because of the efforts. And I just want to say thank you for your service, because it makes as big a difference in our city, our community, as anything that we do in our city. So thank you. God bless you for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kim.
See you, Dave.
We're going to move down to old business, and we have one item, a discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. And I'll recognize our city manager, Mr. Stuart Beedenbow. For this, Stuart, good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. We do not have any prospective appointments tonight for council consideration.
Okay. Do any of the council members have any appointments that they would like for consideration at our next meeting?
I would like to reappoint Mary Beth Fields to the senior commission.
Okay, very good. Any other appointments? All right, we'll consider that at our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairdo. We're going to move down to new business. I'm number one. This is a first reading of an ordinance to approve a concept plan for property located on Whiskey Road between Stratford Drive and Sizemore Circle. By title, this is an ordinance approving the concept plan for property located on Whiskey Road between Stratford Drive and Sizemore Circle. Is there a motion? Thank you, Councilman Chairdo. Is there a second?
Second. I defer to the draw.
All right. Councilwoman Broll, appreciate that. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a concept plan for 11.8 acres to be, and to be zone plan commercial. The property sits on Whiskey Road between Stratford Circle and Stratford, excuse me, Sizemore Circle and Stratford Drive. Springstone Villas is the residential component of the original concept plan that was approved in 2003. Since no building permits have been issued within five years of the original commercial component, it has to start over. So thus, it is started back with a submittal to the planning department and review by the planning commission, and now before you. The developer is proposing a Lulu's car wash on the southeastern portion of the property, with the balance to be subdivided in reserve for future development. Any future development would require revised concept plan for review by the planning commission and city council. This proposal pertains only to about two and three-quarters acres of the parcel with a Lulu's car wash that will be similar to the other locations in the area. We have one on Richland Avenue West near the Walmart, and one on East Pine Log Road. The developer proposes a 35-foot wooded buffer along Stratford Whiskey and Sizemore Circle with a 40-foot buffer proposed along the western side of the property, which is adjacent to the Springstone Villas, along with a 42-foot rideaway with three access points, a ride-in, ride-out only on Whiskey Road in somewhat near the center of the property, one access on Stratford Drive with full movement, turning movement, and one on Sizemore Circle with full turning movement. We have approval authority for the access on Stratford Drive, which is a city-maintained road. The developer also proposes a monument sign, which is the same design as the Lulu's on Richland Avenue West. Since DOT policy does not permit piecemeal installation of ride-in, ride-out only on Whiskey Road in somewhat near the center of the property. One access on Stratford Drive with full movement, turning movement, and one on Sizemore Circle with full turning movement. We have approval authority for the access on Stratford Drive, which is a city-maintained road. The developer also proposes a monument sign, which is the same design as the Lulu's on Richland Avenue West. Since DOT policy does not permit piecemeal installation of sidewalk segments, the developer has the option to pay fee in lieu of installing sidewalks and street trees or accommodate the sidewalk into the development rather than on the right-of-way. No traffic study is required based on the number of customers per day at other Lulu's locations. The planning commission met at their July 14th meeting and unanimously, it was unanimous by those present, there were two members absent, to recommend the following approval with the following conditions that I'll read into the record here at first reading. Number one, that the development comply with the landscaping, tree preservation, open space and buffer requirements of the zoning ordinance. Number two, that the development comply with the LDR Whiskey Road corridor study regarding installation of sidewalks along Whiskey Road and adjoining streets. Or alternatively, that the development pay a fee in lieu of sidewalks and street tree installation in an amount as determined by the city engineer. Sidewalks shall be depicted on the site and landscape plan for each phase of development pursuant to the concept plan. And either construction of sidewalks or payment of fee in lieu shall be satisfied prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for each phase of development. Number three, that a traffic impact analysis be conducted, at which time the cumulative development of the planned commercial zone property projects to generate 100 peak hour trips or greater. Number four, that access from Whiskey Road and Sizemore Circle be subject to approval from SC DOT. Number five, that the signage comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and policy established by the LDR Whiskey Road corridor study. Six, that the applicant sign an agreement stating the conditions of approval within 90 days. And number seven, that the developer submit a revised concept plan, listing any conditions of approval be submitted within 90 days. I know, too, we've had some discussions about the intersection there where Stratford terminates into Whiskey Road and also Powder House. And we've had some discussions with DOT through our traffic engineer. And I guess two options that would be looked at, it would be either/or, DOT would want us first to look at potentially reconfiguring and restriping the intersection at Powder, where Powder House terminates into Whiskey Road. And if that is not feasible, and that it could be for a number of reasons, but primarily from a cost standpoint, and a lot of that is based on utility relocations. Another option would be so-called split-phase traffic signal at that intersection, which would be a second or option B. We would have to look at the restriping and potential reconfiguration of the intersection first. But a split-phase light for those that, it's similar to what we have at Whiskey Roads and Silver Bluff and Price Avenue next to Virginia Acres Park, where at each of the three signals, they are split into three different phases, unlike a traditional intersection where the east-west direction has right-of-way and then the north-south or vice versa. So we have before you tonight this ordinance for concept plan approval for the development, proposed development located here on Whiskey Road between Stratford Drive and Sizemore Circle.
And Mr. Beedenbow, there were a lot of concerns early on about the concern of the water. And I think that, we were in a discussion earlier saying, could you share that about the regulations that are specific for?
Absolutely. For this type of car, this type of businesses is a car wash-type business. The water is recirculated and recycled and ultimately it would go directly into our sanitary sewer system. It would not go into a stormwater system or be released back into the soil. It would, after being recycled, it would ultimately go into the city sewer system and ultimately to the regional sewer plant for treatment.
Okay, very good. Thank you for sharing that with us. Opening it up at this time for comments. I know we have several members here. Peter, it's good to see you today. Welcome back to Aiken. If you would, just say your name in the.
My name is Peter Stein and I live at 100 Sessions Drive and I'm currently the president of the Stratford Hall Homeowners Association. So, thank you, councilpeople and mayor.
Yes.
I thought I was going to get away with not having a where or give my name because I wanted to have people wonder who was that last name.
With the mask.
It's amazing how the presentation, I've heard it several times and I'm sure over various times, my last time being 15 years ago, when I was presenting against the curb cut for the hotel, the Holiday Inn, and how that was worked out. Now, there appears to be a consideration for even more properties in that general area. There's houses going up just on the east side of Whiskey Road next to the convenience store. There's the potential for the old BP station to be addressed with more commercial. And there are certain assumptions I wanted to make here. You address one of the retention and the water runoff, certainly that is a concern for one of our neighbors, which is the Springstone Villas. They would be impacted greatly if that runoff, impact, it would impact them. Anyway, I would like to make some base assumptions because there's been a lot of conversations amongst ourselves, some of our representatives, both state and local. And number one, Lulu's, the proposal has not been approved. That's why we're here. Two, that the city of Aiken is responsible for the curb cut off of Stratford. Three, the Department of Transportation has responsibility for Sizemore, that it is a state road. And based on a recent conversation, the Department of Transportation has no opinion on the Stratford curb cut. Number five, there is no current proposal to fix the intersection, which would be a grave concern if the curb cut were to be approved. You will have, as a big part of the document you received today, a lot of citizens that sign these. I spoke with many of them, over 100 from my area alone. And while the curb cut was definitely a pet peeve, the intersection was paramount to anything happening. If we don't get a correction, and I realize expense is something there, but we as taxpayers realize that, I would probably be forced to, and block your imagination or your eyesight and your mind, but I would stand like the cowboy, naked cowboy in Times Square with a bottle of Pappy Winkle's, Pappy Van Winkle.
Is that a 20-year seat?
Yes. If that doesn't get fixed. And I don't know how to say it any plainer, that there's a lot of citizens that I represent that I got cauliflower ear. And if I could convey that to you, please, take that in consideration, one with the curb cut and curb cut without the intersection.
Right.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. If you want, hold one moment, I think she's going to wipe that down.
I can spit.
I know.
I'm a little on the short side. Can you hear me? Am I being picked up?
We can hear you, yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Step in, hon, to line. Good evening to everybody. Thank you for having us here. My name is Zell Durand. I live at 204 Khaki Court. And I'm going to refer, because Mr. Osborne has asked us not to repeat ourselves, so maybe if I refer to the paper, I can hold my mouth. Anyway, I moved to Aiken 15 years ago and I have patiently looked forward to the purchase and the development of the corner of Whiskey and Stratford Drive. Well, now it's finally happened. All that's left now is to make it work. There are definitely pros and cons to be considered. And on one side, the property will finally be beautified and tax money will finally flow into the coffers as well as revenue from water usage and sewer return. And that's a good thing, right? But on the other side, there are serious concerns that need to be addressed. And these are questions of how and what steps will be taken to eliminate emission pollution, noise pollution, and of course, the community's disapproval of a curb cut on Stratford Drive. Now, Lulu is well aware of these concerns, but we're still waiting to hear acceptable solutions. Tonight, I am really standing before you on behalf of my friends and my neighbors to tell council to please reconsider the cut on Stratford Drive. You've heard from us twice before, the reasons that we don't want it, I'm not going to repeat now. You are well aware of them. You heard them for the hotel, who worked with us. You heard them for the nursing home. And although they never ended up on the property, they also work with us. You have to know how passionately the homeowners really, really feel about this. And for the present time, we're unaware why you would reverse your original decision for these two previous applicants, for this new applicant. I don't know if Lulu has a representative here tonight, do they?
I think they do, yes, ma'am.
Well, Lulu, I want to say to you that you're up at bat now and we really are behind you. We really want to see you hit a homerun out of the park. But you've got to work with us, especially on the strat, exit, entrance condition. We've been looking for a good neighbor for a long time and it could be you. Please, naked you, please work with us. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Appreciate your comments. Yes, sir. You'd like to address this phone? Good evening.
I'm Mark Graham, Carolina Land Service, and I'm representing Lulu's. My address is 1934 Highway 57, North Little River, South Carolina. I think there's a number of things. The city manager has certainly addressed a lot of the items, told you what was going on with them. Lulu's itself doesn't really generate traffic, require a traffic study. And talking to some of the engineering companies, the company, the old company they used to work with, Southern Partners and another one, you know, the important thing, I think that DOT and the development company would like to address as far as that turn is concerned, the ability to use the light that was built there makes it safe for people to come out on Whiskey Road and turn left. And without the ability to do that, you really kind of adversely affect the traveling public on Whiskey Road if they come out, if you have a lot of other cars coming out on Whiskey from some other, you know, from the other road. The right-in, right-out will take some entrance access away from Stratford Drive. And then, of course, anybody going right can just go out that driveway in the middle and turn right. But turning left on Whiskey Road with later development is, the light would have to be, the intersection would have to be addressed somewhere, you know. And I remember back when they were working on a fill-in station across the street, there were some problems with the city's water utilities, I think, and as far as making that turn lean any further. And that light, the alternate light situation, I think, may be the answer to that problem. But that's really in the engineering phase, not in this particular phase. I'd be glad to answer any other question you have. I think that those questions are going to have to be answered in the engineering phase. We have plenty of room for stormwater so that we can meet or exceed the city's stormwater management criteria. When I say "we," it would not be me because I'm not with engineering company anymore, whoever does that engineering. I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody had.
I'd like to ask, if you don't mind, Mark, I know I've heard mention in conversation and obviously from our perspective, we want to make sure, we don't want to leave things hanging in a manner that, well, we asked for that, but we didn't put it in as far as our, before we passed the ordinance we were looking at. But I've heard, I've heard mentioned about maybe speed bumps to keep people from cutting across the two roads. I know Mr. Jardoe has talked about that. That's something, I guess, as a development, would be amenable to.
Cutting across what?
Cutting across from Stratford to, what's?
Sizemore.
Sizemore, yes. So, I mean, I know speed bumps was something that was brought up as a potential to keep people from cutting across.
Anything the city wants done like that would be fine. Those would be city roads.
Yeah.
We're just trying to keep it from being a cut-through. I don't think Stratford as much would cut through, but Sizemore coming to the light just to slow people down. Speed bumps would.
Yeah, certainly whatever you want to done, then that could be done. That would not be a problem at all.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Graham? Okay. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Susan Wilton, and I live on 228 Khaki Court. And is there any reason that the gas station would have to be 40 feet buffer from everybody's backyard? I mean, that's got to impact our property values. I mean, it's, these people just bought into the neighborhood. Our prices are finally kind of coming online with the rest of Aiken. And now, 40 feet, that's like seven of me. There's that noise. And the lights that might be up in the evening, I just don't see how that could be beneficial. Why couldn't they at least move it further towards Whiskey Road? Is there any possibility of that?
You're talking about the track behind, behind the Villas, correct?
Behind, I'm sorry?
The Villas. It's Track C on.
Right. It's the one on Lynn Drive and they're talking about 40 feet from those people's backyards.
Well, that's not going to be developed at this point.
40 feet?
No, that's 40 feet when that's developed down the road. This would have to go through the whole planning process for Track C going forward.
Can you show me?
Stuart, do you have anything on that?
And we were told they've decided to take Track.
B is where they're building the car wash. That's what's under consideration right now. C is going to remain woods for the time being, as I understand it. We could, Mark's shaking his head, yes. So, that's down the road somewhere where they come back with the.
And if anything was proposed on Track C, it would have to go through planning or be.
They'd have to retain their own water. They'd have to have a whole completely different system.
That's not being touched at this time.
And the reason that the need for a curb cut going in both directions. And the reason that the need for a curb cut going in both directions on Stratford, because they don't want to go out on Sizmore Circle where there's no houses?
They're looking down the road, I would say, from the standpoint. Mark would have to answer that.
I think it's because of the signalization on Whiskey is...
It's a safety issue to go to the traffic light, and as Mr. Stein has pointed out, we need to get the traffic light corrected, which we're working with DOT on that. But from a standpoint of going out and turning left, they want them to come to the traffic light, was the suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. All right. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Hello. Welcome, everybody. Good evening. I'm the treasurer for Springstone Villas.
And I don't want, I don't want to throw off your, if you would, just so we can have it on our records, if you'd say your name and...
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Bill Rowch, R-O-U-C-H, 151 Lynn Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Rowch.
Okay. Yes, there we go. Can that be adjusted? I just wanted to show the normality of this situation. I've got a pointer here. This is Whiskey Road here, and this is... This entire area right here, triangle shaped, that is Stratford Hall. And you can see that, no. Out of battery? No. There we go. Okay, willing with, that's the only exit from Stratford Hall, is on Stratford. The same way goes for, if you go to the upper left-hand corner, that is Springstone. And you can see all of those homes, according to the loop, and that comes around, and that is the only exit onto Stratford. The next one down there that is a reversed L, that is Springstone Villas. And that dumps out onto Stratford also. But the, the real problem is actually when that, the property that Lulu's is going to be on, that whole segment, when it's split in half, that's where the problem starts. The people from, that get their, their car washed have no way to get onto Whiskey going north, except if there's a road that they want to put in from Whiskey to Sizmore Circle. And then, that way they can get through the light in order to, you know, go north. Otherwise, all the other exits are geared for going south on Whiskey. And that's, that's the problem, is that the intersection and the, where the, all three subdivisions end right there at, on, at the middle of Stratford, there's over 200 homes in there, and they all only have one exit at Whiskey. And you know about the hospitals, hospital, about the Holiday Inn situation, how that was taken care of and, and it was eliminated because we didn't want the, the traffic from the parking lot dumping out onto Stratford, and then using, you know, our, not our stoplight, but the stoplight at the intersection of Stratford and Whiskey. Now, that's really, the crutch of the problem is the stoplight and the, the road that they want to put in. You know, we don't want that in there. They're going to have to try and find a different way by not using a, a road that is going to be cut in. And one, one last thing I'd like to bring up. The property that is to the west and the north of the Holiday Inn, are they going to get, be able to get a curb cut on Stratford at a later date? Because there's, there's something on the books about the number of curb cuts that can be done on that road. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rowch. Appreciate you sharing with us today. Any other comments from the audience? We appreciate the neighbors being here and sharing, of course, and receive correspondence and...
Jerry Waters has been...
Yeah, okay. So, Waters, good evening.
Why do people take off their masks? Why are they taking off their masks?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome back, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Your council folks, good to see you. I'm Jerry Waters, living 1547 Devil Road, into the city limits of Aiken. Been a resident of Aiken County for more years than most of you have been born, so. Been in the development business a long time. I just want to give a little history to Stratford Hall. I was very much involved in, in development at the time that Stratford Hall, as that street is called now, was designed. It was designed in, in the late 80s when Woodside was really going strong, and SOS was changing contractors, and they were, they were looking for 15,000 more people. And Stratford Hall was, was designed to be ingress, ingress, egress to Woodside, which was, was planned to get a big portion of these 15,000 people. Plus, Stratford Hall was designed to take care of what you're now looking at for Lulu's at a much higher density than Lulu's is actually putting in. I was developing something else in the area, and DOT, actually, the road was put in in a different location than it is now. And DOT required that the road be moved to align with Powderhouse. They had to move it 67 to feet. I don't remember what it was, because they said they would, at some point, install a light there at Powderhouse. I understand that now that light needs some corrections. But all I'm giving is a background. That road was designed as it was and improved as it was to furnish a much larger, greater portion of the property than it can serve today, because Stratford Hall now has blocked off any access to Woodside. So, that's the comment. DOT, back in the late 80s, felt like Stratford Hall could handle the things of the future and, and allow curb cuts on to all the properties. And it looks like Lulu's is only asking for one curb cut. And that's all I have. I had another call earlier today from this man's, what do I call him? Peter. As a historian, he said, and it was, this was Mike Farmer, he said, Jerry, I've got to ask the old man something. So, anyway, that was, if you have anything of me, that's all I'm here for, just to give you a little background.
All right.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Peter, we only speak once, so I'm sorry. But I'll be glad to talk with you after. All right. Any other, hearing none, comments from council?
I'll take my mask off. I've, I've spent a lot of time with Mr. Stein and the other homeowners association presidents in, of looking at this project and going through it. And I agree with Mr. Stein, it all is incumbent upon getting the, the traffic light to a point where it's safer. Powderhouse doesn't run, it's not perpendicular coming in. It comes in at an angle, and it's created some problems. There's some striping problems, which we're addressing that. But I think the staggered light, the phasing of the light, like we have at Whiskey Road and Silver Bluff and Price Avenue, would alleviate a lot of that. And that, I think we can all agree, needs to be done. As far as the, the road itself of cutting through, putting speed bumps, making it not so much a cut through, it does afford one thing. I know that back in January, when this came up, they didn't have any cut off of Whiskey Road. And this is a redo from January, and they added in the deceleration lane in the right out coming in in the middle of the property, and Lulu's is going down there in that southeast corner. And going forward, one of the complaints was, there's no way out of Stratford Hall and Springstone on Stratford Drive, except through Stratford Drive. If there is an accident in the intersection, if that road is there, it at least does give you the option of being able to, to turn and get out of there if there is that bad of traffic accident. So, that's, that's a positive, and I understand what you're saying in terms of you don't want the curb cut. I hear you. But at the same time, it's a safety issue, coming out to the traffic light to turn left with the traffic light is a whole lot better than what we've had in the past in terms of curb cuts on Whiskey Road. So, I think it's a, a good plan, it just needs the traffic light. We've talked to Jennifer Beal from, who's our traffic engineer liaison to the DOT, and we're working on that to try to get a definitive answer on all of that.
Very good. And Councilman Giardo, I know, has worked with Pete and Mr. Howard and some others on, on that, and I would, I would just second that. I think, I know we've obviously engaged with SC DOT on, on this, and also, I think we now have three members of our delegation, state delegation, between Senator Young, Representative Bart Blackwell, and even...
Bill Taylor.
Yeah, Representative Taylor's involved also. So, you know, usually DOT is, is pretty cooperative when, when you get the delegation involved with, with these issues. And I think, I think we're all on the same page as far, as far as the split phase signalization, and the restriping on Powderhouse makes sense. And I, I think we've even got some bushes that are in the right of way where the BP is, is left that need to come down because of the line of sight as well, some things happening there. But we will, we would certainly know more about that before this comes before us, I would, I would assume. And I'd ask, ask staff to try to expedite that, so when we're looking at this at second reading, we'll have some answers to those, those questions, if it makes a second reading, obviously. Any other comments from council?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
To address the issue of the light bothering people in, behind there, I'm assuming that the planning commission will recommend that there's some sort of light pollution that generates the light to the inside of the project so it doesn't spill out to the other parts of it. Is that in there, Mr. Beanbough?
With the issue of the light pollution, I'm, I need to defer that to Mr. Bland, because I'll let him answer that.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Bland.
Good evening. Sorry, I was pulling that up. I was getting a couple sections confused, so I was just making sure. So, the planned commercial district does include ambient light standards for commercial development.
So, they would shine in and not out?
Yeah, and so it, it, yeah, it essentially prevents, it directs line, like, yeah, that's correct, down, and in such a way that it only can spill over so much from the site, which is generally just about the boundary of the site before it starts to dissipate to pretty close to moonlight standard, actually.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
And Ryan, while you're here, that, the 40-foot buffer they're talking about, that was, that was off of just, that was Plot B, I believe, on...
C.
Correct. So, that's for the ultimate build-out of the site eventually. What is that doing essentially? So, our minimum planned commercial standard is a 10-foot buffer. They're offering a 40-foot buffer to the rear. So, that's, that would be taken into account over the long term of the site. In the short term, much of that back parcel, that entire back parcel, would, would be wooded, would remain wooded. And then, whatever the distance, so that distance to the road, and then the Lulu's on the other side of Little Road. So, that 40-foot is actually in effect for the time being, until something is approved on that back lot, the entire width of that back lot.
Right. And again, nothing, nothing has been presented or certainly approved on, on that, so...
That's correct.
That would come before us and a lot of, if there was.
Any additional development of that site would come back all the way through the same process this is going through.
Track A as well.
That's correct. Track A as well.
Ryan, I have, I have a question, if I may...
Sure. Ms. Gregory?
Regarding the sidewalk segments, the developer has an option to pay a fee in lieu of installing sidewalks. What are, what is the developer considering doing when it comes to sidewalks? I may have missed that earlier, but...
I'm not sure we got into that conversation in that, that, in depth with them at this point, as far as which way they would prefer to go. So, the two options are to either install them on their side of the property, we would make sure that they would connect to the corner so that you could connect that to another sidewalk system. Or if it were to be on DOT's side, DOT may not permit it, although they may, they may say that's a reasonable stretch. If they were to not, then we would, as a city, work with their engineer to assess the, the present value of that sidewalk, so that we would have that, at which time we could get a connection all the way through DOT. We might be able to get, DOT may allow us to put the sidewalk in.
Okay, okay. Well, that would be ideal.
That would be ideal.
That, that fee in lieu of, though, would that be, that fee be paid to, I guess that's dependent on what you just said, to the city or DOT?
Right. So, the city has been, there's been several developments along the way, the city has been getting those funds...
Okay.
And setting them aside for these sidewalk projects along Whiskey Road.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it.
When will the traffic light issue be addressed? Do you have any idea?
It's being looked at now. I don't believe we would have a definitive answer by second reading, which is two weeks from today, should council pass this at first reading. But we are, the, the two options we're looking at with DOT are the restriping and the potential reconfiguration of the Powderhouse intersection at Whiskey, and the split phase traffic signalization.
So, how long would it, would we have to wait to hear that back from that?
I, I don't have a definitive answer. I know Jennifer Beal is here, and she's been the one that's been communicating with DOT on that. If she would, she could maybe shed some light. I don't think it would be in, if it, if we couldn't get it in two weeks, I think we would hear something relatively soon.
Good evening, Ms. Beal.
Good evening, everybody, council. We don't have a definitive answer because we can't control the DOT process, but we would expect that, we've already had preliminary conversations with them, we've talked to them about the engineering side of it and the analysis, so we would hope it would be done quickly. Two weeks is probably a little too close, too tight for them, but we would expect it in short order, and they know this is a priority. And so, it's just working through the district level, which is, which are based in Orangeburg.
So, you think it'll be resolved to the resident satisfaction?
What we're, what we're doing is we're doing, we will look at all the different analysis, and we'll make sure that the, the DOT looks at the different options, and then we'll, you know, there's a couple, as the city manager pointed out, there's a couple that we're looking at, and then we will kind of see what can be, what can be installed based on their guidelines.
Thank you.
Ms... Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see if Mike has anything to add. Mike, you have anything?
Well, Mike's coming up. I talked to Bill Taylor, and I talked to Bart, I talked to Tom, everybody, everybody's well aware of it. And Bill Taylor, I know, did call DOT directly and talk to him, and he called me back and said it looked real good. So, we've got more people than just...
So we've got more people than just us working on it.
And one thing in our favor, too, is they do look at the cost burden, and while this is still in process, we've discovered, and we know relocating utilities is much more expensive than signalization. And there's a reason, if you noticed, when the intersection was improved several years ago, it's kind of an abrupt tapering right there to the right, if you're coming down Powderhouse towards Whiskey Road. And the reason is because of, a primary reason was to avoid having to relocate a lot of utilities.
Right. Exactly. So we have water and sewer there, but there's also a large fiber optic cable that runs down to SRS. So there's consideration of that, and where that ends up in the right-of-way, and why the turn lane was, ended up kind of more abrupt than normal coming off of Powderhouse. Conversations with DOT are a little kind of difficult, in the sense that with the COVID going on, that we have people that are in the office one week and out the next, and in the office one week and out the next. So in order to do this in two weeks is probably almost impossible, but I would say probably within a month, we would have some preliminary ideas of what we could kind of compromise with going forward, that doesn't include moving, you know, we've got a 14-inch water line that runs down, we've got the sewer that connects down, and then that big fiber optic cable. So you would spend more trying to relocate some of that stuff than just changing signals and striping. So I think that's probably where it'll end up at some point.
Thank you.
The reason that I wanted to hear from Mike is I know firsthand of the working relationship that we have with DOT, based on the experience that I personally witnessed. And if there is something that can be worked out with our department, I know that our team will do their best to work something out that will help with the citizens. So I applaud you all for what you do in terms of trying to make it work for our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Very good. This is first reading of this ordinance. I think we have some questions that we'd like to at least see answered, or some sort of movement or commitment towards before we get this, and hopefully by second reading, because I think the citizens who live in this area have expressed some valid concerns. Even without the Lulu's on the signalization, it's dangerous, and it poses a danger. So I just want to encourage staff, and I'm going to join Councilman Giardo in calling our delegation members and letting them know a timeline, so that maybe their calls to DOT might help you, Jennifer, in your process on it, if this passes on first reading. With that, I'm going to look for a vote on first reading of this ordinance. All those in favor of approving the concept plan on first reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. And we'll look for those conversations, and obviously, Peter, to you and the neighbors, Councilman Giardo will be involved in talking to you as we move forward to that. But I think hopefully this will be a process that makes it safer for everyone, so--
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone in the neighborhood, for being here tonight also.
We'll keep you abreast as we hit some benchmarks in our conversations with DOT.
Thank you. Ms. Rahm, Ms. Wilson, thank you all for being here. All right, we're going to move on down our agenda. Item number 200, new business. This is a resolution approving the Aiken Municipal Development Corporation downtown redevelopment plan by title of resolution adopting redevelopment plan one, as recommended by the Aiken Municipal Development Commission in matters related thereto. Is there a motion?
So--
All right. We said, Ms. Price made the motion.
Second.
Okay. And Ms. Broll seconded. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the charter, or the charge of our municipal development corporation that was formed late last year, the South Carolina Code requires that they must draft and present to city council for approval redevelopment plan. And we quote verbatim from the state code in the memo, and the area that is selected for review, and again, it's a very modest area in terms of geographic size or acreage, but it's something, an area that I think most everyone would agree is a component of our downtown, and it's essentially from traveling Richland Avenue West, from Lauren Street down to Chesterfield, street south towards Park Avenue. So it's roughly two blocks from east to west, and one block from north to south. The plan that was reviewed by the Municipal Development Commission is in the agenda packet, and it's due tonight for consideration via resolution.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any comments from the audience? I see we have our chairman of the commission here, Mr. Dangerfield. Thank you, sir. Any comments, questions from council? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of this resolution, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Tim, thank you for the work that you and the commissioners are doing, and we're very excited and looking forward to good things coming, so we appreciate it. Yes, sir. Moving down, new business, item number three. This is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing economic development incentives for a project developed by Woodford Trace SC LLC. By title and ordinance authorizing certain economic development incentives pursuant to ordinance number 08132018 of the City of Aiken Code of Ordinances for a project developed by Woodford Trace SC LLC, approving an economic development inducement and incentive agreement and other matters related thereto. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Giardo. Thank you. Ed.
Ed.
Yeah.
Councilman Ed.
Ed, Ed. There we go. Thank you.
Ed, do you have that?
That's right. Councilman Walt, thank you. Comments from staff?
Thank you. Tonight, we do have this proposed ordinance in front of you. We, as you know, we have an incentive ordinance that council passed about two years ago. This one, this is our fifth, or excuse me, our fourth one before council since the inception of this ordinance. It is by far the largest in terms of development costs. When, just for comparison's sake, the first one was Betsy's, and their incentive was based, was 1% of their $680,000 investment that was eligible for reimbursement. We had the South Company about a 1.5% incentive based on a $275,000 investment. The old Union Building at Fairfield and Park was a $275,000 investment, and it was about incentives of $3,600, which is about 1.3%. Woodford Trace, this is a total of about a $9.7 million investment with about a $98,000 incentive. Since it is a construction project similar to the South Company and the old Union Building, we're only recommending that the incentive be for one year, whereas the Betsy's one, if they meet certain benchmarks, is a multi-year. And it is significantly larger in terms of the incentive amount, but again, it's based on the total development cost. So what we've started doing, this is the first one that we've treated this way, we are taking these incentive, these to the Municipal Development Corporation for their review and recommendation, and they recommended that it come to council for consideration at first reading.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Any comments, questions from council?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Gregory?
As I read this, I see where the commission voted unanimously for, in recommending this be brought to council. Who on the commission votes?
The commission, there are nine members on the commission, and three of them are council members, and I believe the three council members recuse themselves from this, since it is coming to council. Along those lines, if I may, I think we may be bringing, based on recommendations from the commission, an ordinance to revise the way the membership is composed, to address any of this, these questions in the future. But I know the council members on there, which are the mayor, Pro Tem, Ms. Price, Mr. Waltz, and Mr. Giardo, they're very careful when it comes to voting, now as voting members, that this conflict doesn't take place.
Good. No, I think that's wonderful. I'm glad that council members were recused from that vote. That's the correct thing to do. I'm obviously in favor of moving forward with this, and I appreciate that this even, that this got brought to commissions' attention, so I'm sure Mr. O'Brien had a ton to do with that, so I appreciate that for sure. I will continue to state that I think the structure of the commission needs to be revisited, and I do not believe council should be a part of it. Can council attend meetings? Absolutely. But should they be voting members and/or the core part of the membership? I still believe they should not. So I just wanted to make sure.
I'd like to echo Councilwoman Gregory's opinion on that. You know, we appoint to all the other commissions and boards, but we do not sit on them, we do not give input to them. I think this should be an independent commission that is out there brainstorming with ideas, then they can bring them to us. I think having any of us there present, whether we want to admit it or not, inhibits their freeness of talking and bringing up ideas. That's just my opinion.
It sounds like next, maybe our next meeting, we'll have an opportunity for debate and discussion on this further, so--
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. We will, to address these concerns or comments that have been made tonight, and that we've heard separate from tonight's meeting.
Especially because-- Mayor, let me just echo the fact that what Councilwoman Andre Gregory is mentioning is nothing different than what the members of the committee have not already said themselves. So this is not new, in terms of your recommending--
No, no. This is something I've been expressing since we formed this commission.
This is going to be proposed at our next meeting, so--
Good. Excellent.
In terms of some changes. And I think that the city manager, along with our attorney, is already aware of what is being recommended for some changes to this board.
But for the record, this, Councilwoman Price, this has been something I've been recommending since the formation over a year ago. But it also opens up three seats to talented entrepreneurial professionals out in our community that can take membership of this organization and do, as Councilwoman Broll suggested, and brainstorm and do what they do.
Very good. Is there any other conversation on the incentives for the project development of Woodford Trace tonight?
No.
Okay. And I do look forward to having an opportunity to discuss this at our next meeting, because I think it is important.
It is very important, and I agree.
All right, very good. All right, all those in favor of the first reading of the ordinance authorizing economic development incentive for the project developed by Woodford Trace SC LLC, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item number four, this is a first reading of an ordinance to annex 229 East Pine Log Road and zone it residential single-family RS10. By title, an ordinance to annex property owned by Aaron Beatty and to rezone the same residential single-family RS10. Is there a motion?
I still move.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Diggs, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have this applicant pursuant to our water and sewer annexation policy, 229 East Pine Log Road. The proposed zoning is residential single-family RS10, which is consistent with the surrounding properties. The planning commission reviewed this July 14th, and all present voted to recommend annexation and zoning residential single-family RS10. It is before you tonight for first reading.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council? And all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item number five, this is a first reading of an ordinance to annex .40 acres owned by LED of Aiken E., located in the intersection of Park Avenue and Richland Avenue and zone it general business, GB. By title, an ordinance to annex to the corporate limits of the City of Aiken, certain property owned by LED of Aiken E., and located at the intersection of Park Avenue Southeast and Richland Avenue, and to zone the same general business. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Giardo. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Comments from staff?
We do have before you this annexation. As you may remember, we, when we gave a grant to the Steeplechase Association, one of the conditions was we wanted it in the city as expeditiously as possible. Acquisition of this 4/10 of an acre parcel that is adjacent between Park Avenue and Richland Avenue West made that possible. So we have this before you tonight for consideration of annexation, and it is somewhat tied in with the next agenda item. And the planning commission reviewed this and voted 4 to 0 with one recusal to recommend unanimously that it be annexed and zoned general business.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor of this item, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item number six, this is a first reading of an ordinance to annex 140.80 acres owned by Aiken Steeplechase Association, located on Old Wagner Road and Rudy Mason Parkway, to zone the property planned residential PR and approve a concept plan. And by title, an ordinance to annex to the corporate limits of the City of Aiken, certain property owned by the Aiken Steeplechase Association, and located at the intersection of Old Wagner Road and Rudy Mason Parkway, and to zone the same planned residential PR to approve a concept plan. Sounds redundant, doesn't it? Is there a motion?
I still move.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'm sorry, the motion was--
Move.
Okay. Ms. Diggs in the second?
Price.
Ms. Price, thank you for that. Comments from staff?
Thank you. As noted in the prior item, when the council executed a grant with the Steeplechase Association, one of the considerations was to annex the property into the city. And we've had a number of discussions with the Steeplechase Association since they acquired the property in early February, and after, to try to find the right zoning use for this property. And it is planned residential, was deemed to be the most appropriate based on the use. They do have, long-term, some potential commercial options for some frontage property, which would require, of course, going back to the planning commission, then back to council, once they feel like that is important or appropriate, excuse me. The planning commission has reviewed the concept plan for the council, and they've recommended approval with five, excuse me, six conditions I'll read into the record at first reading, that additional evergreen plantings be installed if the buffer is not adequate to screen use from adjacent residential properties, that a jurisdictional determination by the United States Army Corps of Engineers be provided by the developer, and any other land disturbance permitting by DHEC. In addition, a minimum of 20% open space will be provided, minus the detention pond if it cannot be planted with trees. That is determined by the planning director, a single-ground mounted sign be limited to 75 square feet at the intersection of Richland Avenue and Old Wagner Road, a 50 square feet at the intersection of Old Wagner Road and Rudy Mason Parkway, are limited to two ground-mounted signs on separate road frontages with 60 square feet for the first two tenants, and 10 square feet for each additional tenant with a maximum of 120 square feet. That encroachment permits be approved by SC DOT. That an annexation plat be recorded within 180 days, and that the applicant sign an agreement stating-- an agreement stating the condition of approval within 180 days. And you have before you tonight, first reading of this ordinance to annex this property owned by the Steeplechase Association and approve the concept plan with the stated conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Beedenbo. Any comments from the audience? Any comments or questions from council? All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. That's exciting. Moving down to petitions and requests. Item number one is recommendations of, from accommodations tax committee for allocation of funds from 2019-20 funding cycle. Is there a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. And I'll recognize Mr. Beedenbo for comments from staff.
Thank you. First, this is, I want to note again, the funding that our accommodations tax committee looks at is state accommodations tax, which is money that is paid to the state and then sent back down to the city. And it's limited on how we use this money. This money is used for tourists, attracting head, so-called heads-on beds, so advertising more than 50 miles away, these various groups that apply. Of course, COVID-19 has affected a number of events. So there were several entities that did not spend, canceled events or did not host of, or were unable to, to have a full-fledged event. So what we're doing is unlike in a normal circumstance, where money that's not spent ends up going back into the fund to be awarded in a next award cycle. Here, this will not be care, these events will not carry forward any unspent money. So we're recommending that a portion of the remaining unspent funds be reallocated to the tourism division for projects to help local hotels, restaurant and retail stores, which were hurt due to effects of the pandemic. Our committee members appointed by council feel strongly that the city should provide, excuse me, promote Aiken as a destination within a two to three hour drive and as a destination for small business meetings or conferences. So we recommend that the 42,380 be awarded to the city and ADDA per the recommendation from the chair, Peggy Pinlin. So we have before you tonight, this recommendation from the committee for the allocation of unspent funds from the 2019-20 funding cycle to be used for the postponed event into market Aiken.
Mr. Beedenbo, since the Hops and Hogs and Busking Festival did, I don't think they occurred, did they?
They are not. That has been canceled. I saw a formal...
Day's paper.
In today's paper, yes. But it, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, it has been canceled.
So do we, do we need to make that a $38,200 allocation? Or do we need to designate it towards marketing for, for something else? It's listed as one of the three items. Certainly ADDA would be fine, but I think we probably need specifically to know.
Yes, we would. I think the memo is dated last week and I believe the decision to cancel was made prior to the date of the memo. So yes, we need to amend it and make it $38,200. So that is, that would come, I need to be, I'll ask the, the city attorney, I guess we would need to make an amendment.
Can we not have Ms. Broll, Ms. Diggs just make their motion for the 38,200? Okay.
I accept my motion.
Would you be all right?
I collect it.
Motion is second?
Yeah, agreeable.
Okay. So what we're voting on is for the, for those in the packet is we're, we're removing the 41,800 at this time because that event was canceled. So the total amount will be for the 38,200 represented by the economic development and, and the money for tourism.
Correct.
Okay. Very good.
Do we have a plan for this money? I mean, how it's going to be used? We have a title for what it is, but do, how, how's it going to be spent?
We've got Jessica Campbell here and Tourism Director Mary Roschback.
It'd be nice to know what we're, what we're voting on spending for.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. Yes, the committee received an application, a grant application from both the city of Aiken Tourism and the Economic Development. We have portions of that application with us tonight. I can certainly breathe through a brief description, if that would be helpful for you. But I'm welcome to provide copies of that application in which the committee reviewed and made their recommendation based on. Bear with me, I'll flip to it. The Aiken COVID-19 Recovery Campaign, that's through the Economic Development. The description says this project will help drive commerce in the form of shopping, dining, recreation, and overnight stays. The campaign will utilize cross-device targeting by leaking multiple device activity to maximize sequential storytelling and KPIs. Using data in this way makes every dollar count. Our goal is to increase foot traffic as quickly as possible so they can begin to recover. Target audiences include Columbia, South Carolina, Greenville, South Carolina, Charleston, South Carolina, Savannah, Georgia, and areas within the Augusta Drive Market outside of the 50 miles of Aiken, which is a requirement.
That's the Small Market Campaign?
That is the Recovery Campaign through Economic Development.
Campaign.
Sorry, I didn't have that in order. And Tim, is that a project that you helped put together? So Tim O'Brien is, I don't know if he's prepared to speak on that, but could give more detail. Mary Roschback is the tourism that submitted the Small Market Meeting project. And the description on that says, "Top-tier meeting planners from qualified readership will be recruited in order to help select the best applicants to join a fam tour of Aiken." So that's your, like your travel writers, bringing groups in to then promote and write about Aiken. This exclusive program brings up to 15 qualified meeting planners to experience the best of the destination so that they can bring their groups back for future meetings. This offers Aiken year-long visibility in Small Market Meeting Magazine, website and social media channels, accumulating in a seven to eight-page feature article highlighting the trip that will run in an issue of Small Market Meeting Magazine that's mailed to 10,000 meeting planners, over 8,000 meeting planners that receive the digital edition of the magazine, and includes print and digital components that will provide a year-long campaign with Pioneer Publishing. So that is a very brief description, but again, both Mary and Tim, I'm sure can speak more if you have specific details.
Well, I've asked... Just for the specific plan, and this came to Economic Development because someone at the city needed to make the application and it couldn't be the tourism department. It was really a good partnership that we worked with tourism and Haley Aiken Downtown Development and Bandwagon Media. And we evaluated several different things. There was initial consideration of actually including and incorporating some of our safety precautions that we have in the community, which we have included in the campaign. But a lot of this will be, some of it will be billboard advertising outside the area, leading people in and establishing that this is a good nearby place to come visit and that we keep safety on the forefront here related to the pandemic. A lot of it is digital media and we did get a proposal from Bandwagon that looked very good as far as advertising. The outdoor activities is what we wanted to concentrate on, specifically using imagery where families could come and be very separate from others. And we, we thought of several iconic things, including activities in our parkways and our parks, in our horse district, where we could get images of people enjoying their family time greatly separated from, from others. We didn't want to typically, we might concentrate on a restaurant or a bar scene and, and that's really what we were trying to, to find an alternative for people who wanted to travel somewhere where they could enjoy small-town charm and some, some time in nature. So that's really the specific plan that was developed.
So many of our downtown businesses are working shorter hours right now. If we promote this and somebody shows up at 4:30 in the afternoon and finds that half the business downtown are closing at 3:00, how are we going to work around that?
Well, that is a chicken and the egg question. We both need to work with our businesses, which we're doing, to encourage them to, to do their best. They are impacted individually by some health concerns and, and just concerns about the pandemic. But hopefully, this campaign will create traffic downtown that will convince our merchants, hey, I need to be open because there's foot traffic there. So that's really the goal is...
Chicken for the egg, isn't it? Somebody going to show up and nobody's open, or are they going to stay open hoping somebody shows up?
True. It is a circular argument and we're working both ends.
And then what part of this ADDA money is going to go to this? Or what is ADDA going to do with their money?
ADDA was a participating, basically, we, we all put our heads together and took a situation where we'd had a number of events that had been canceled. Jessica and the tourism department said, here's a problem and an opportunity. And we put our heads together. Instead of leaving that money to evaporate, we said, how can we apply it to the current situation? Because this is very much, you know, an on-the-field call to say, these events aren't happening. We need to use this money now to our best advantage to try to build traffic in Aiken.
So, so we explained what the first two are, but the ADDA money, is it going to be just thrown in the pot?
That's what, that's what we just amended.
And we took that out.
That, that's, that's what we amended.
Okay. So that's out completely then?
Yep. So the total is 38,200.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And ADDA, ADDA was essentially a really good partner on the team, trying to figure out where we should, where and what we should market.
All right. Just like to know what we're spending money on.
That's a good question.
And I, I'd like to point out that we have our accommodations tax committee chairman, Peggy Pinlin, with us this evening. Peggy, thank you for you and the committee's hard work and, and putting this together in unusual times for certain. And we appreciate the recommendations. Thank you, thank you for that. You care to address or you... I say that because I don't remember you ever not speaking at a...
I seem to always be called up, but not tonight. Mr. Mayor, I'm so glad to see you here.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I'm sure all you realize that when the pandemic hit, the hotel, restaurants, retail business suffered a tremendous blow. And our committee met a couple of months after that about the events that had been unfortunately canceled. The Steeplechase, the Masters, which doesn't receive, you know, ATAX money, but it hurt all of us. And many other, you know, the U.S. Equestrian Federation outlawed horse shows and we all suffered for it. So members of our committee feel strongly and have felt very strongly for the last two or three years that the city should spend marketing dollars to promote Aiken as a destination. Some operations are franchises and they have big pots of money, but other properties like the Wilcox and the Carriage House and the Rose Hill and, you know, people like us, don't have those kind of resources. So we thought that the city could be the clearinghouse, so to speak, to advertise. Now, I realize that there is a segment of our population who does not want any tourists coming in here. Okay? I get that. And we are fully aware of the dangers of this virus. However, there are opportunities, which unfortunately for the last two months, we have not taken advantage of because of various budgetary reasons, et cetera. I know as a hotelier that there's opportunity in the summertime, believe it or not, that's when we all really are hurting, to attract people from the Low Country. And the two places I didn't hear tonight were Hilton Head and Beaufort. It's the Savannah area, yes. But we were not able to, Mary did everything she could, but we were not able to do the Facebook posts and the kind of marketing that should have happened as of May, June, to boost the business in Aiken during the summer. So I'm very pleased that there now is a proposal. And I know that we have a new company called Bandwagon and I hope that, you know, they do a great job. I do want to mention that as far as ATAX dollars, and I received this figure from the city, 90, approximately 92% of the ATAX dollars are generated by hoteliers outside of downtown. Okay? So that is an important fact. And we need to market this place to individuals, couples and small groups who are not a danger, where we can socially distance. They can go to Hitchcock Woods and take a walk in the woods. They can go to Hopland Gardens. They can do what we call ecotourism. So unfortunately, we're a little behind the eight ball. So my advice is let's get busy because we understand the concerns of the residents of Aiken. But if our hotels and our restaurants and our shops go under, then what do we have to offer to our residents? Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
Peggy, this is Ashley. You can see, hear my face moving a little bit, see my face moving, but you can't probably hear me very well. You have made a wonderful comment about the other things we should be doing, rather than in this period in time concentrating on people coming to stay overnight and walk downtown. They're looking for other things and certainly we should have had our eyes on these things early on in March, April. But your comment is timely, but even, and when we get beyond the COVID, and we will get beyond the COVID, this is still something that we need to be doing to broaden the interest in our town because we have wonderful things to offer, but we've got to market it properly.
So if I could say one thing, and this is, you know, a little off the record, but you got to get creative during this virus. So thanks to some good input from some good, some good friends, one thing that we have come up with, and it starts, it started today, actually. It starts on August the 25th and then September, October, November, December. At my small establishment, we are going to have something to benefit, and it has nothing to do with profit for my place, but musicians have been hurting. Artists have been hurting. All the art shows have been canceled. Musicians can't play. And people are hungry. So we are, we started today with two musicians who were going to, pre-of-charge came and they're going to do Facebook, video, whatever, to build momentum for an art show that's going to take place in September. And this is really small crowd, but this is the kind of thing we need to get into our heads. Okay? Social distancing, drop-in, art. The musicians will play at the art show and then all the money, or if we have any profit, which I will make sure we do, goes to ACTS, food program. And I understand they are in desperate need. So we've got to think outside the box. That's all.
So how many people are part of your team?
We have about six or eight partners, but our business can't accommodate a big crowd and it's not a good time to have a big crowd.
Right.
So this is a small thing. Okay?
Okay.
But it should grow into something bigger and we have to find another venue for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say what a wonderful place the Inn at Hounds Lake is, owned by Ms. Pinlin. She, you, you named every, every place except those. So thank, thank you for that. All right. So before us is a consideration for 38,200 is money for the city of Aiken So before us is a consideration for $38,200, is money for the City of Aiken Tourism and for the City of Aiken Economic Development, which was explained. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Petitions and requests, item number two, this is a approval of a resolution to provide water and sewer utility services to 101 Dominion Drive by title of resolution authorizing the provision of water and sanitary sewer utility services to property located at 101 Dominion Drive. Is there a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Councilman Girido. Councilman Walts, second. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have before you this application. It's for a proposed sit-down restaurant with a drive-through service. And as part of our policy for provision of water and sanitary sewer to unincorporated areas, it establishes our process and conditions for these services. The planning commission met at their July 14 meeting, and all those present unanimously recommended this request with the following conditions: that an approved, excuse me, executed agreement on the provision of city services, listing conditions of approval, be recorded within 90 days of approval by city council at the county RMC office; that there be a condition that the agreement to annex the property as soon as it becomes contiguous be executed by the property owner and recorded within 90 days; that the transfer of ownership be completed within 90 days of approval by city council; that the site and landscape plan comply with the City of Aiken tree preservation and landscaping regulations; that the project comply with the requirements of the Whiskey River Corridor Study; that the sign be ground-mounted monument sign with a sign area of no larger than 75 square feet; that an inter parcel access easement to the southern undeveloped parcel be provided with the location shown on the site plan; that the MUTCD compliance striping be installed on Dominion Drive through the commercial area, and that the entrance be redesigned to alleviate the potential left-turn conflicts, and that the city engineer approve the design of the water and sewer service. And this is before you, in the form of a resolution, to authorize this service.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council?
This is Duke's barbecue?
Yes, it is.
That's correct.
All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Moving down to item number three, under petitions and requests, this is approval of a resolution to provide city services to property located at Columbia Highway and I-20 by title of resolution authorizing the provision of water and sanitary sewer utility services to property located on Columbia Highway North. Is there a motion?
Aye, so move.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Walts. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have this request for city service for the proposed convenience store just north of I-20 at US-1 or Columbia Highway North. And the city, the planning commission heard this proposal at their July 14 meeting, and all those present unanimously recommended that the city services be placed, excuse me, be granted to this pending council approval with the following conditions: that the agreement on the provision of city services be recorded within 90 days of approval by council at the RMC office; that the property be annexed as soon as it becomes contiguous; and that the appropriate documentation be filed within 90 days; the transfer of ownership be completed within 90 days of approval by the council; that it comply with our tree preservation and landscaping regulations; that signage comply with the City of Aiken sign ordinance for properties on general business with the exception that the development be permitted an additional sign of up to 80 feet in height, that is due to the proximity to Interstate 20; that SEDOT approval for the access drives be obtained before approval of the site and landscape plan; and that an inter parcel access easement to the out parcel to the east be provided with the location shown on the site plan; that a traffic study be approved by the City of Aiken on-call traffic engineer prior to the approval of the site and landscape plan; and that the engineer for the city approve the design of the water and sewer service. That is before you tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, this isn't getting into the staff vivo, and I discussed with Mr. Beanbo since then, but the applicant is asking for some additional time in excess of those 90 days that we typically give for an annexation agreement and the transfer of ownership to occur on this property. I believe the primary issue being is that we still have to extend sewer across, and that provides them a little bit of uncertainty on their timing. They want to make sure that that is available, I believe, by the time they start to close their deal on the property. So they ask for some additional time, larger than the 90 days. They would, they requested specifically a year, that's further than we would typically go on that. Generally, you don't want to have something extend out to the point that conditions would change significantly. But that was a request of theirs to buy some additional time on those two items, one and three.
Mr.?
Yes, that. And I know from a staff perspective, we are okay with some additional time. The sewer project has been bid out. It came in well under budget, and I think the timeline, what's the timeline for the construction?
Right now, for the construction of the sewer line, boring under I-20, getting it across, we're looking at probably the first of September to start. So we're going to be in November by the time we get that project complete. Water is already there, there's a fire hydrant there, so we're probably looking at November.
Which was about a month longer than we had hoped, but the project did come in well under budget, which we're thankful for.
With the contractor being low as he was, we had some questions and some comments to go back and forth with. We've never dealt with this contractor before, but all the indications and even contractors that we deal with now recommended this contractor. So it took a couple extra weeks to get that information back. That's what pushed us out.
So would staff recommend changing the 90 days to 180 days, or?
Yes, not longer. We believe that that would be the furthest out, would be 180 days.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Broll?
Mike, or Mr. Beanbo? In here, it says that this area, the project would be affected by a construction recovery fee. Is that, we want to explain that a little bit. Did that take place?
Yes. What there would be is, there are impact fees to install the project, but similar to the, similar projects we've done in the past, there would be an additional fee. It would not be dollar-for-dollar, because this is economic, I mean, council's been very clear that you wanted infrastructure developed. It would be no more than probably 25% of the cost. The bid for the, it's about 73 acres this sewer project is covering, and the bid came in at just over $700,000. So unlike other projects, it wouldn't be, you know, so much per acre, where in this case, you would be looking at tens of thousands of dollars, but it would be more in the line of about 25% of that fee.
Is this just the first of others that are coming down the pipeline?
That is, we believe so. By extending the sewer line, since the bid came in so low, we were able to run the sewer as far out as we hoped to, which is Piper Road. And there's some developable frontage. Again, this will encompass 73 acres of property that potentially could tap onto city sewer, and once they do that, they'll have to sign an agreement to come into the city once they're contiguous.
Let's get there.
And this falls in line, too, with the expansion of the water and sewer area that the county council has to approve, and that will be before them and for first reading later this month.
Thanks. Thank you, Mike.
All right. I'm going to ask, Ms. Diggs made the motion, Mr. Walts seconded it. At this time, I think it'd be appropriate, maybe item one and item three, at the request of the developer to change the 90 days to 180 days. Does that, does that cover us, counselor?
Yeah.
So if you'd be willing to?
Yeah.
All right. So the motion and second on that is for 180 days, not the 90 days on items one and three. Ryan, does that cover us on everything? Thank you. With those changes noted, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Item number four, this is approval of a resolution to provide sanitary sewer service to property located between Toolbeck Road and Charleston Highway. A resolution authorizing the provision of sanitary sewer utility services to property located between Toolbeck Road and Charleston Highway. Is there a motion?
No move.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Girido. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We have before you this sewer request. The water service will be provided by Couchton-Montmorency Water and Sewer District. We will be providing the sewer, similar to how we do it in Foxhaven and Deodar currently. We, the property is currently not contiguous to the city. However, it still had to go before the planning commission for this approval, and they voted unanimously, all present, to allow the, recommend that sewer service be granted with the conditions noted below, including that the agreement on the provision of city services, listing conditions of approval, be recorded within 90 days of approval at the, by the city council at the RMC office; that the property be annexed into the city as soon it becomes contiguous; that that document be executed and also recorded within 90 days; that the city engineer approve the design of the sewer service; and that the applicant initiated development agreement with the city; the site and landscape plan comply with our tree preservation and landscaping regulations; that the sign be ground-mounted and have a sign area of no larger than 24 square feet, if a single sign or combined square footage, if a double sign; that the portion of Woodward Drive be improved from each entrance to the closest access point onto Charleston Highway, subject to approval by the city engineer; the Toolbeck Road entrance be approved by SEDOT; the cul-de-sac have a paved area with a diameter of 96 feet and a right-of-way with a diameter of no less than 100 feet; and that a traffic analysis study be approved by our on-call traffic engineer and the DOT. This is again for a development of approximately 60 and a half acres between Toolbeck and Woodward Drive, which is parallel to Highway 78 Charleston Highway. And again, it's for up to 247 single-family units, which includes detached and triplex units. And it is before you tonight to allow the provision of sanitary sewer service.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that item unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item number five, this is an approval of a resolution to provide water and sewer services to property located on University Lane off of University Parkway by title of resolution authorizing the provision of water and sanitary sewer utility services to property located on University Lane. Is there a motion?
No move.
All right. Councilwoman Price made a motion. Councilman Girido, second. Comments from staff?
Thank you. This subdivision, University Estates, we have received a request for water and sewer service for a development across University Lane off of University Parkway. It would include 12 townhomes with groupings of six single-family attached dwellings. And we did receive several inquiries from interested parties, including residents, regarding any restrictive covenants to prohibit the proposed use, but the covenants were amended in 2019 to allow townhomes and multifamily developments within University Estates, and that development dates back to the early 1970s. We do have water and sewer service available. And again, the planning commission reviewed this at their July 14 meeting, and all those present, by a vote of four to one, recommended approval of the application with the following conditions, including appropriate notations and recordings of documents with the RMC office; that the engineer approve the design of the system; that the site and landscape plan comply with our tree preservation and landscaping regulations; the signage be appropriately sized; and that ingress and egress drives receive an encroachment permit approval from DOT. And this water and sewer request is before you tonight via resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. So it's 12 townhomes and groupings of six, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Good evening.
My name is Charles Blair. My address is 1236 University Lane. I've been a, Aiken County has been my home for almost 20 years now. And forgive me for reading my remarks, but speaking on my feet is not my strong suit.
Reading is fine, Mr. Blair.
It's okay.
Thank you.
I'm speaking tonight on behalf of 12 homeowners at University Estates. We are opposed to the building of 12 townhomes on lots restricted to single-family homes in our subdivision. At the July city planning meeting, I and several others spoke, making known our opposition to utility hookups and this project. We cited the likely negative consequences to our peaceful enjoyment and quality of life and the aesthetic quality of our community if this project came to be. If allowed to go forward, this project is likely to damage our property values, too. There were several written comments opposing approval of the request for services, and one individual spoke on behalf of approval. He was the seller of one lot to one of the requesters. He has never been a homeowner, in our view, has no apparent skin in the game. When it came time for a vote, the chairman declared that he had to accept the amendment to the covenants the requesters created just last year, 2019, as valid, because they were, quote, "notarized, recorded, and probated." He held up a document we assumed was the amendment. I want to emphasize that last word the chairman used on the record, "probated." We all know that notarizing a document or recording it does not imbue it with any real legal weight. We contend the 2019 amendment submitted to the planning board is an invalid instrument. The creators circumvented the process of restrictive covenants by not giving all owners notice of their plans to create an amendment and an opportunity to vote on it. These men made a unilateral decision to create an amendment to allow their project of multifamily dwellings without any notice to other owners. Our group consists of 12 homeowners. We are the majority of owners. We all call on this council to reverse the planning board's approval for the requesters' city services, because it is, at best, of questionable validity. We want the name of the judge who probated the amendment to our covenants, and to see that judge's signature on the amendment. The planning board chairman absolutely relied on that amendment when calling for the vote. The board ignored the voice of 12 in favor of three, because they accepted that document as real. as real. If the chairman was in error about the amendment being probated, we want this board to reverse the decision of the planning board or delay approval for services until the requesters invite all owners to vote on their project, as they should have done a long time ago. We also ask for this board to explain to us their policy as to what the standard of proof is for documents submitted for consideration of a vote. We believe the signatories to the 2019 amendment of our covenants acted in bad faith for their own financial benefit and not for the betterment of our community. So we respectfully request this council acquiesce to our request for the legal basis for the probate of the amendment, and if there is none, reverse the lower board's decision they based on a document of dubious validity. Now, I will say this, if I have the wrong end of the stick on anything here, please correct me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Mr. Butler. Perhaps are there some others who would like to speak on it? Yes, sir. Good evening, and I want to say to all of you, thank you for being so patient. I'm sorry, this is at the end of our agenda. You've been here.
That's okay, sir.
Thank you.
We have something very important to speak on.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, my name is Kevin Butler, I'm speaking on the homeowner of 116 Campanile Court, and I would just want to speak on the ownership of the majority parcels group. They have the opportunity to benefit from their owning of this property. So they want to build more townhomes, apartments, and my question is, will it be in the future to build more for the parcels that they have in this area? They have at least 40 parcels of this area that we live in. So my question is, are they willing to, are they going to build more over time to make more money? And that is very concerning to me and my family. We have been living there four years now. We looked for a home two years plus to be able to find a home that was considerable for our kids to live in, neighborhood, good neighborhood, good environment, things of that nature, and with this being done, it's taking all of that away. So I just ask y'all that's on the panel, to think about if it was your home, and you had somebody taking away your peace, your, you know, your peaceful neighborhood and things of that nature, would you be okay with that? You know, it's very concerning to me that these people are taking this opportunity to, to benefit, but not looking at what we are going through. You know, we are a small community, as you know, but we like it that way. And for these people to come in and just see an opportunity to make money is very concerning to us, and we like it how it is. We had no intent of seeing it become something different, which we have no idea what it will be, but we don't look at it as being beneficial to us. So I just ask y'all to, to think about that and consider what Mr. Charles had to say. Thank you.
Mr. Butler.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I missed your last name, forgive me, but.
Aaron Butler.
Well, thank you for that.
Mr. Butler.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
So what you're advocating, and the residents that are currently there, is for single-family homes rather than these townhouses?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, very much so.
Mr. Butler, I drove all through there, it's a beautiful.
It is.
Yes, ma'am.
Area.
We try our best.
It looks really good, and I can understand because I know there's those condos or apartments, and they're not very well kept.
No, ma'am, at all.
And then there's some behind them that are single-story. I don't know when those were built. Were you aware that they changed, when they changed this covenant?
No, ma'am, we had no clue whatsoever about the covenant being touched or changed or anything at that point in time. We found out about that.
Excuse me, if I may speak about the townhomes.
Give us your, give us your name.
Name and address.
I'm Elisa Sanders P., I live 112 Campanile Court. The townhomes that were built behind were built out of covenant. When we've learned about them, it was too late. And so the developer, two years ago, attempted to build townhomes that they're requesting now. We found out about it, and we went to the planning commission office, and it was stopped because our covenant specifically said our homes must be 2,200 square feet. And so they, they stopped, they stopped, they didn't allow them to build. And then we saw the signs, and we all started inquiring again about what's going on, and that's how we learned that the covenants were changed. If I may say, it's, it's, we've really been disrespected.
Yes.
Because we're homeowners, the people who have changed the covenants are property, landowners. So they own the pro, the land, but they don't own the homes, they don't live in University Estates. It's, it's a lot of dishonesty going on, and you hear some questions, and the reason we're asking questions about what's next is because the developer that was here in July, Chris, we asked him some questions after the meeting. He said, "Call my office in North Augusta, and I will have the lady schedule an appointment with you all to tell you what's going on." I've called at least five times, and what I'm told, he's not in the office, he's not in the office. So the questions you probably think we should know, we don't know, because they haven't taken the time to respect us. It's very disrespectful. We were told, "We're coming to help you." We're not helpless beings, we are homeowners. We don't, we hadn't asked for help. William said there hasn't been any buildings in decades. I built, my husband, my late husband and I, we built our home in 2003. I have since done additions, I have a four-bedroom, three and a half bath. I thought about selling when I heard about these townhomes. I had a realtor come, the price that she gave me, she said, "Because of those townhomes, it'll be much lower." Keep in mind that Chris said, "Oh, when we build these townhomes, we're going to appreciate your home value." That's disrespectful, because we know that's not true. There's no townhome in Aiken that will appreciate any home. We were also told, "Oh, we're going to sell them as individual units." We don't know that to be true. His house looks straight into the field. We're not talking about townhomes down the road, around the bend, we are talking about townhomes right on our property line. It's my property, and then there will be the townhomes. So we are asking, and ultimately, if they have the right to change, they have the right, but we're asking you guys to hold and let them do it the right way. We were never asked to come to any meeting to say, "We're amending the covenants," never. If you look at, in your packet, you will see those of us who disagree with the changing, I mean, the amendment, I'm sorry, disagree with the building of the townhomes, and those who signed the new covenant. Our signatures are not on that covenant. We never even had the opportunity, out of respect, do the right thing. That's, that's what, we're just out of respect.
May I ask a question?
Please, councillor woman Gregory is back in us.
Just so I understand, and based on the gentleman behind you, I'm sorry.
Butler.
Mr. Butler, I just want, just trying to put, piece it all together. You purchased your homes in this area based on, obviously, the beauty of it, because it is a gorgeous area, and the covenants that you were presented with, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have an HOA or Property Owners Association?
We don't. It's the covenants that have guided us. When I built my home in 2003, we were given a copy of the covenants. That has been the governing policy, but as for, as a formal HOA, we do not have.
Do the covenants say they can be amended by the property owner at any point?
It says in there, it says the majority of the landowners.
The gentleman.
I'm going to say, whoever's talking needs to be at the mic, not just standing there. And if you, Mr. Butler, if you want to sit down while she's talking.
It says in it that it can be amended, however, it, the majority is the property, the majority of the property.
Just step up to the mic. No, it's okay, I just want to make sure you're captured.
The majority of the property owners. But it's also, we are all supposed to know, we were never even told it was up for consideration. We were totally disregarded, which they would have, because we stopped them from building two years ago, so they chose not to notify us about the changing of the covenants.
And then I ask myself is, how that covenant document is actually written, you know, and I'm not really familiar with it, to be quite honest with you.
The gentleman.
Sure, sure.
What we don't do is hopping up and down, she has the floor, but I recognize our councillor at this time, if we could.
And Mr. Smith, in addition to that comment, I just want to add, because maybe you could shed some light, is, so how it's written, I'm not familiar with, but, but also, can this, I mean, if there's a legal document that was a, a binding document upon purchase, which are those covenants, can the city supersede that? I mean, you know, there's, there's a lot of vagueness in this topic, so it doesn't seem right, right? But I don't know what that document says, so I guess I need direction in that. Because I was, when I went through this, I was, I was, I was not very clear, and you guys have shed a lot of light, but again, I still am not clear on the covenants.
And, and it's a little different because this is just a, this is a request for services, obviously, but it's not in the city, so I don't know how it was planned, I didn't see.
I'm really.
How's it planned in the county, Stuart? Do we have, do we have that?
I'm checking on that as we speak.
Ryan, do you know? I'm sorry, you're at the mic, and I would like to hear you on the covenants in particular, forgive me.
Nice mask. Ryan Blan Planes District, it's a rural development district, so that he, that allows multifamily. So there are certain.
This is in the county.
In the county.
What's the zoning again?
The rural development district.
RD.
Which, RD. Yes, right.
RDU.
RD, not RE.
Not RUD, RD.
RD. And what's the water, is it wells in Septic now?
The homeowners would.
Ms. Sanders, do you, do you have a well?
No, I have city.
I said, we're on city water.
City sewer?
We're involved.
Yeah.
The city sewer? You do? Okay, thank you, Mr. Butler.
Yeah, I believe this would be a change in land use is why, so we, we would have permitted city water to the subdivision at the time it was created with the condition of single-family residents, because they're essentially changing to a denser land use. That's what triggers the re-review of these particular lots as part of this request.
The water in the sewer is already there.
That's right.
Right.
It was part of the, yeah, that original, larger subdivision when it was created.
If they don't get sewer, can they still build them on Septic?
Think DHEC will let us annihilate.
At that density, I don't, I can't say for certain, but I would say it's doubtful.
I guess my, another question I have is, by, by supporting this resolution, is that opening the gateway for everything else to fall into place and all that, or is, or is the city water and sewer already tapped in, and, and we're just going to just, what, open the gates? I mean, I'm trying to understand this, I'm really kind of confused about the whole thing because it is county, and I know that, okay, we have city and sewer already going into the homes and this residence, so now the resolution is, is to, to do exactly what if it's already there?
And we just have water, you know, not sure.
Oh.
I think they said we do have sewer.
We have, I have water, city water in Septic.
You have Septic, okay. Mr. Butler, is that what you have?
Don't get them sewer, they can't go.
So I'm.
So I heard the first gentleman talking about, apparently, what Mr. Hunter said when the planning commission considered these restrictive covenants. And so he talked about them being signed, being recorded at the RMC office, being probated. A probate on a real estate document is where the notary signs to prove the witnesses actually witnessed the signature of the person that did it. It's not, it's not taking it to probate court, it's a, it's a term that we use on these documents. So if it was probated, that means that it was notarized. Okay? And so if the document was recorded at the RMC office, then it met the requirements of being recorded at the RMC office. It had to be properly witnessed, it had to be notarized, it had to be probated, they had to give them the proper number of documents in order for that document to be recorded. There's nobody at the RMC office that looks at that document before they record it to make a determination whether or not that amendment was passed in accordance with the requirements of the restrictive covenants. There's no independent evaluation done to determine whether or not that was a proper document. So when that document comes to the city, what the city knows is, is they have a certified copy of a document that's been recorded at the RMC office, giving notice to all the world that is being alleged that that is a proper document. Okay? The city is not, the city has no way to make an independent evaluation as to whether or not that is a proper document. There's only one way you can challenge the properness of that document, and it would require the homeowners in that neighborhood to file a legal action in the Court of Common Pleas, to have a judge review everything, hear witness testimony, take evidence, and then make a determination as to whether or not that amendment had been passed in accordance with the proper procedures outlined in the restrictive covenants. I can't do that on my own, Mr. Beanbo can't do that, Mr. Blan can't do that, you can't do that. So it would require a legal process in order for that to be a challenge. I would seriously urge the neighborhood, if they really are concerned about the validity of that document, to seek their own private legal counsel, to get the advice that they need to decide what path they should take going forward. If, if their lawyer is able to help them understand that it really was not done correctly, they may very well be able to stop this from happening. But it's, what is being presented to the city tonight, it appears to be a proper document that was presented to the planning commission and the city council. And so the city council has to address the request on its face as to whether or not you think it would be appropriate to provide those services to that organization, given the conditions that planning commission has recommended you put on.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the clarity.
All right. Any other comments? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm William Brantley, 2202 Gadsden Street, Columbia, South Carolina. I didn't know the process here, I'm still recovering from cataract surgery, some of y'all may remember, having a little difficulty last time, but I'm not, thank you for letting me take this off so I could speak, with the glasses and the cataract surgery, I couldn't read, couldn't see very well last time, but here I am again. So I submitted another set of comments to the record, which you have, which is basically the same as the comments that I submitted to the planning committee previously, I made a change here or there. But I'm probably the oldest, I won't read unless I get lost, I have to refer to my comments to you, but basically, I think I am the oldest property owner in University Estates. Gene Williams was the developer of University Estates. He was my uncle. My roots are Graniteville. Gene Williams et cetera, the Williams clan, and the Williams family is a very large family, and Gene Williams was a very successful man. And he convinced me to, to buy into his dream. Cost me a lot of money at the time, this was 44-plus years ago, that I bought my first property there, which is the one that's adjacent to the last, and it's the only property I now have. I had more at one time, I bought it auction after he passed away, but I've since sold those. But I still own the one that's adjacent to one of the parcels there, the one I'm pointing, it's the one next to the blue across the road there, I'm to the right of that. That's my property, that's the one I bought 44-plus years ago. I don't have the covenants with me, I didn't bring them tonight. I've. I have looked at them many, many times, particularly back in the planning days with Jean and I having a drink and a meal together, when he was putting this concept together back in 1972. Goes back that way. One of the first buyers, if not the first buyer, in University Estates. I know what he wanted. He wanted a nice, vibrant, exclusive-type development. That's why he insisted on 2,200 square feet. I pushed back at the time. I said, "Jean, that's a pretty good-sized home." This is back in the '70s now. Okay, in the '70s, it wasn't all that big. That's back in the '70s. You don't find, you don't build, I'm not going to build a 2,200-square-foot home. This is too big. People are getting smaller, more maintenance-free. But beyond that, the covenant said 2,200 square feet. Okay. The covenant also, as best as I remember, says that the majority of the property owners can change them. I am a property owner. I ain't got a house there, but I'm a property owner. Used to own more properties. It ain't, but this, back to my comments, written distressed a little bit. It's not but six homes. Six homes, single-family homes in that neighborhood, after nearly fifty years since the design and the idea came. Part of that reason that it ain't but six is 2,200 square feet. Mainly, though, the man that dreamed it, designed it, wanted it, pushed it, died forty-four years ago. Ain't nothing hardly happened. Ms. Pease's home, built on, next to one of the lots I used to own, and I had to give approval for her to do that, by the way, is the last home. And she said 2003. I thought it was a little older than that, but that's still nearly twenty years ago now. Nearly twenty years ago, is the last home built. Of the six homes there, two of them don't meet the size requirement of the covenants. So you got two out of the six that are in violation of the covenants. The covenants now have been changed, far as I know. I wasn't part of any of that. But the neighborhood needs something. People live in there in the woods, and if that's what they want, that's fine. But I still got a piece of property. I'm not going to build, I'm not going to build my house on that. I'm seventy-two years old now. I want something done in University Estates after Jean and I planned this since 1972. I still want to see some growth, some vibrancy. This is the best concept that I've seen or heard about in decades for that area. And they're going to be owner-occupied, people that have pride, pay taxes. I don't know whether the entire neighborhood will be turned into townhomes. I don't know. I don't really want that either. But I, all I can do is what I can do. It's not my plan. I won't push for that, but if somebody wants to push for it, I ain't going to stop it either. Because there are sixty-something property places in that original neighborhood, and it ain't but six houses right now. Something got to change. I think this is a good idea. There is sewer there for these two properties. I know that because I granted the EKIN city vacant permission to run the sewer line behind those two pieces of property, one of which I still own. So there's sewer there. Water's always been there. Since the developers built those townhomes that are already there, they were talking about, that are rental homes that I'm told are going to be turned into owner-occupied. But I'm told. I don't know. They have now run sewer from the proposed site. Both sites now, because the sewer line is already there for the site, for one of the sites in blue. They've run lines from the one across the street to connect to that. So there are now city water and sewer. So I'm told. I didn't see the bitch diggers there putting it in, but that's what I'm told. But I know sewer's there because I granted permission. I urge you to let this project go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Brantley?
When you, you're, Mr. Brantley's saying that you were told. Who, are the developers telling you this? Who's telling you this?
When I called, I got the notice like everybody else. I called, because I know the man. And I said, "What's going on?" And he told me what's going on. Then at the planning committee meeting, the engineer who was here, I talked with him after the meeting's over, and that's what he told me then. And that's what he said to the planning committee meeting at the time. The engineer did. Came up and said that there are water and sewer, that they had put sewer lines in. It's in the record, it should be.
Have you had to go before the county? Would they have to go before the county planning commission with a concept for this? Or have you been before the county planning commission?
Yeah. I got skin in this game, but I only got real late. I just, I found out about the planning committee meeting literally a couple of days before the meeting.
Right, which is for services, but I'm just wondering, since this is in the county and in the unincorporated, if there's a site plan, I'm assuming? In fact, I'm going to ask Ryan Bland, our planner, thank you, thank you, Mr. Butler.
Why, why are they asking for sewer if there's sewer there?
It's because when the sewer was there, it went through a similar process to this for public services. And at that time, it was assumed that it was going to be for single-family development. And in our policies related to public service provision to properties outside the city limits, if there is a change in density or significant change in use, change in demand essentially, it triggers re-review of that process.
And that's what this is...
One sewer to one lot or to both of these?
Both of them.
So that's kind of a little tidbit we should have known about, I think, that there's sewer there. Because I don't think anybody on commission knew there was sewer there.
Yeah. The sewer, the sewer doesn't serve all properties through that area, but there is a sewer line. It runs...
So they need an increase in sewer over single-family?
Has to be expanded.
Yeah, so...
So is the resolution to, because of the change in density from single-family to the density, multiple townhomes in one location, that's what we would be up for approval? Not that we have to expand sewer or city?
That's correct. So the sewer line runs kind of back here behind these lots, and it kind of cuts over at some point. But yeah, so they would have sewer access from here. Like I said, it doesn't serve all lots in here. It kind of bisects this whole little subdivision.
Where does the other one pick up?
And so the sewer, so it's a sewer main, and they would be asking for service from that sewer main.
I would have to come under the road?
To come across here, yeah, under the road.
So these townhomes would be rental units?
At the, at the planning commission hearing, the representative said that he would be building them to be for-sale townhome units.
Value? Price?
I don't believe any was given. I don't recall any given. With regard to the county processes, so the county would oversee the permitting process related to these, other than our city services. It's my understanding that townhomes can be conditionally approved with density requirements on RD district properties. So I don't, I'm not certain, not aware enough of their processes to know whether it'd have to go through any public hearings.
But these would be approved through the county? Right.
Right.
When it comes to actually the layers and their, like setbacks and regulations and density and that sort of thing, that is, the stormwater regulations, all of that goes through the county.
But when they...
It's in their jurisdiction.
When they get city services, don't we have a right to put conditions on it?
We can condition city services.
Yeah, we can condition it.
Yeah, that, it's essentially a provision that the city created to try to make properties that are outside the city but receiving city services more congruous, I guess, or more compatible with development inside the city as well.
We can condition these properties if we grant them the service.
You have the ability to condition the service connection, yes.
Right.
But the thing to keep in mind, in the past, this has come up, and we, I wasn't on council, you weren't on council, this, in the past, that things have come up. The hotel on the south side always comes up of, "Well, we don't think it ought to be a hotel. We didn't provide them with services," and they went and got services elsewhere. And that's always the case. They can, it's in the county. The county, all we're being asked to do is whether we're going to provide water and sewer. And we can't say, "You can't develop it. You can't do this, that." That's up to the county. And I agree with Mr. Smith that if they have, and I appreciate what they're saying, and they don't like it, and they should hire an attorney and fight the thing if that's what they want to do, but that's not up to us to decide that. We're up to decide water and sewer.
And thank you, everybody, for clarifying that.
We have nothing to do with the zoning.
I'm going to recognize you.
No.
He's going to recognize you.
Yeah, we had, I know you'd want to speak, I believe, well, I see, I recognize you if you'd like to. You don't certainly have to. I just, anyone else who would like to speak and has not spoken on this issue already?
Hello, my name is Marion Tyler. I live at 1048 Greg Highway since, EKIN since 1997, when I moved there. And I know you guys are saying the only thing you all are here are to decide whether to give service or not. And the question came about, about how valid that request that was put into the RMC office. And I don't, I'm kind of confused. Maybe you can kind of help me. I keep hearing one thing keep coming up. As long as it's hold up the trees, something about the trees. What was that? The trees and the landscape keep coming up. And if they stay within a certain thing. And then I wonder, I wonder, I know the city wants money, but it's like, to me, it feels like, "At what cost?" That's just, that's just me. I'm learning. It feels like, "At what cost?" You know? If, 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 I understand you wasn't there when this paper was given, but you have the majority. And the wording did say, and he said it, the exact wording says, "Majority of property owners." It did not say the owner of the majority of property. It says the owner of the, the owner, the majority of the property owners. So I don't understand what's the push? If we, the people who say that he doesn't live there, he stays, he keep, the last time he was here, on the 14th, he says he lives in Columbia, you know? And it's a shame that the property hadn't had nothing done to it. Ashamed to who? The people who actually live there? We live there. And I don't understand the push. What's the rush? And you're saying we can go to attorney, but in other words, they're going to still be doing and moving on? So where does that put us?
Ms. Tyler, I think what we're saying is, the only thing they're asking us for is water and sanitary sewer utility services. That we, because this is in the county, we don't have the authority, and this is a legal issue. We don't have the authority to make any other decisions other than this, on this, that's on our agenda tonight. This is a legal issue. That's what our city attorney was telling you. So it would be something that you and the rest of the homeowners need to consider, is to meet with an attorney and talk to him, since you are, have some belief that the paper or the covenants that was done was not done right, and that you guys were disrespected. He was saying, "This is something that you need to come together as homeowners and speak with an attorney about." But tonight, the only thing they're asking us is for the water and sewer. And later on, when they get ready to develop, to put the townhouses, that'll all be a county issue, not a city issue. That's what we're saying.
Let me, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Price?
I understand what some of you are saying, because you're at this juncture right now, and you're wondering, if this moves forward tonight on the exact issue that we're voting on, what happens? Have you lost control because of our decision? And that, I don't know whether you talked to county council or not, or that you have even came together and talked about an attorney that you can afford. I don't know how that's all done. But something has to take place beyond just thinking that we can not do our job, legally do our job, based on assumptions. And I understand, too, that you felt that you were betrayed by someone, and you don't know what to believe at this point, who's saying what. And while we're not judges on that, there's something that has to take place with you all, too, with taking some legal action and seeing what you can do in terms of the legal action that you would pursue.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Mr. Smith a question?
Sure, certainly. And I will recognize you as soon as the attorney's done. Thank you.
Is it, since they've brought up this, this change of the covenants, is it proper for us to say we have some, we have a question about that?
Do we have a what? I'm sorry.
Do we have a question about whether the change was done properly or not? If we, I mean, is it proper for us to say that because the question's been raised?
I believe if council wanted to receive clarification on the process for how the restrictive covenants were amended, you could certainly ask for that clarification, and that could be presented to the city manager or whoever. I would be uncomfortable with council making a determination as to whether or not the amendment was legally appropriate. Certainly, you can gather the information and have the developer explain to council the circumstances behind the amendment to the covenants.
I mean, could we?
And council may, as a body, decide that, with the explanation you've been given, that you're not comfortable approving this project. That's certainly within your purview. Council does not have the ability to conclude whether or not the amendment was done properly.
Could we table this and let these people go get clarification?
Let the homeowners go get clarification? I'm not sure how easy that's going to be.
Given thirty-sixty days, a...
I mean, the document itself should have some language in it that talks about the procedure that was followed in order to amend the covenants. I have not reviewed the document. I don't know what it says.
Well, that's why I'm asking. If we have some question about it, can we table this discussion until we can get further answers?
That's certainly an appropriate response from city council.
Okay. Thank you.
It is?
Yeah.
All right, we have one person, and thank you for your patience.
My name is Natasha Butler. My address is 116 Capenough Court.
Ms. Butler, I'm going to ask you to say it into the mic, so, because when she's doing the minutes, I don't know that she's going to be able to pick it up. So if you'd say it one more time. Natasha Butler.
Address 116 Capenough Court.
Thank you for that.
Do you know Kevin Butler?
Yes, he's my husband.
Seems like a pretty good guy.
A picker at Georgia.
The biggest issue that I have with the water and sewage is because our house is right across from the property... right across from the property that they're wanting to build. We're on Campinale, so we're like the second dock.
Okay.
And in our yard, there is a sewer line that we've tried to continuously cover that hole up, which runs out into the road on Campinale, and my concern would be that if they're wanting that extension, how would that affect us as far as the water rolling back up into our yard, because it's actually in our front yard. And depending on the weather, and when it rains, that hole that we keep filling, it keeps going down.
That's not good.
Stuart, Stuart, maybe, maybe Mike would know, how big of a, of a line is that?
Yep.
Is that detention fine?
Are you familiar with it?
I think there's a mic over here if you need.
In my opinion.
Is there a mic up here still?
No.
Okay, sorry.
To be honest with you, I don't exactly know what size line that is, but generally running through a subdivision, it's at least six inch for sewer.
Yeah, that's.
I think what she's referring to is stormwater that runs out into the road.
It's, it's not that it runs out into the road, we actually have a hole in our yard where a line was ran, a sewer line, and it goes under the road in front of our house. So with them requesting the water and sewage, I want to know how is that going to affect our property, because right now, only when it rains.
If you get closer to the mic.
Only now, when it rains, does the hole go down, and we have to keep refilling it. So if they get the access to the water in the sewage, how is that going to affect our area, especially with them wanting to build right in front of our house?
I'm not sure, until we see some kind of engineering plans, as far as a hole, I'd have to.
You think that's probably a stormwater?
I'm, I'm thinking I'd have to do some investigation on it.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
I think that Mrs. Butler's point opens up a whole nother situation, that brings it completely back to the resolution and what we're trying to approve.
Mm-hmm.
And I think because of that, and engineering, and us not really knowing what's going on in her yard, gives it a valid reason for us to maybe continue.
Continue it to the next.
So is that a motion to continue?
I'll take a motion to table it.
All right, we have a motion to table?
I'll second it.
Now, to table, we have to move it back off again, would you, we want to continue it so that it could go on our next agenda, or do you want us to?
We don't have to pick a date, I don't think that.
No.
Yeah, we can.
We can put it back on when we think it's appropriate.
Okay, so at the meeting, we will, we will, we would have to.
You've got a motion and a second, I don't know.
So we have a motion to table, a motion to second, there's no discussion, all those in favor? And that's Mr. Walts, Ms. Price, Gregory, hey, Ms. Diggs, Mr. Broll, Mr. Giardo, Ford, the mayor opposes, passes.
So, explain to them what we just did.
So we table it, and what we're gonna do is, is ask some questions of staff, for example, where those lines run, what the capacity is, and some clarity on that.
Be clarity on the covenants?
Right.
You all from work.
For what, they can, I mean, from what I understand, from our attorney, and ordinarily, I know we don't recognize covenants because it's a civil, so, I mean, I don't know, but we can certainly find out more and at least get those documents, so we can see, certainly, but anyway, we, so we've tabled it, and I'm sure staff will be in, be in touch, so, yes, and I'll, I'll speak with you after the meeting, sir.
Just real quick, I mean.
Yes, sir, we, we voted on to table it.
No, no, but I'm saying that.
Yes, sir.
Is it on table forever?
No, no, sir, it's not, it's not, we will resolve it, so, thank you.
Thank you for being here, for coming.
All right. We're moving down to item number six, which is a request to borrow ahead from CPST for funds for grant match for sewer line projects. Is there a motion?
I shall move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Broll, comments from staff?
We do have a grant from Rural Infrastructure for the parallel relief sewer project, which will help with sewer running back towards the industrial park from Highway One towards Highway 19, and we did approve the grant, and we're recommending that we'll do an interim fund borrow for up to $400,000, and payback from CPST four proceeds going forward with the sewer portion of CPST, and it is before council tonight for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Beedenbaugh. Any comments from the audience? Any comments or questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand, and that's unanimous, thank you. We move down to item of information, we have issues and updates, and I believe, Mr. Beedenbaugh, you wanted to make some comments?
Do, we have three items briefly, I've asked Mr. Bland to provide an update for everyone regarding the Hotel Aiken project, that, that was before the design review board last Tuesday, and sort of the steps going forward. The design review board heard this at their work session and took no action at this time.
So, the design review board received an inquiry from a local downtown business owner regarding the status of the Hotel Aiken and the possibility of use of the demolition by neglect provision, or prevention of demolition by neglect provision in the zoning ordinance, that is a tool that the design review board can use to prevent deterioration of historic structures. Hotel Aiken was put on the local register a little over two years ago, somewhere between two and three years ago, and so, it's one of the only buildings downtown that's subject to that provision, and essentially prevents, it's a way for the board to essentially issue a zoning violation if they find that something is in such a state of disrepair that is starting to self demolish, or elements of historic building that are nearly irreplaceable are starting to self demolish. So it was, it was an inquiry that was heard at the board, the Historic Hospitality came to respond at that meeting as well, the DRB provided them the floor with kind of clarifying what the request was to look into, they provided kind of a brief update, just, if you did not see the, the press release issued by them this weekend, essentially what has been going on the last few years is that there has been historic documentation, piece by piece, of the interior of the structure, how it was built, where chases are, it was built in the 1880s, teens, and 30s, and there's no building plans still around, so there was having, there was a lot of kind of opening walls documenting that for the purpose of historic preservation, and starting to redesign and talk with their flag through that process. At the ti, at the, at the, at the board hearing, the board requested, one, more information from staff at the next upcoming work session about, one, any status about the structure of the building itself through the Building Inspections Division, also regarding the security of the building, any calls that were received there over the last year or so, while it's been vacant and in this state of kind of continued being pieced apart strategically on the inside to document, and, so we will work with public safety to do that, to provide that information. At the same time, at the next meeting, the board requested a written response from Historic Hospitality as far as what's been going on thus far, and the status of their plans. At the meeting, it was said that the plans were very close to being able to be submitted, so the DRB asked that in, in 90 days, so essentially two meetings away, that something be presented either architecturally or conceptually, so they could, they, they came to a work session, Historic Hospitality came to a work session around two, two and a half years ago, to update the, the DRB on what their plans were, they wanted an update of that, to know what the moving parts have been in this, in the meantime, with the assumption that if it were to move forward, the board would have to review it anyway, and it's best to keep them updated and formally through the work session process. If the board were to be unsatisfied, and to find that there are certain conditions that need to be addressed, that are historic elements that are failing of the property that need to be established and preserved, then they would have the opportunity to put that on a regular meeting, and if they were to issue a finding, what that would typically do was allow the applicant, or not the applicant in this case, so the property owner, some time to respond by bringing those things up to code, and if not, then a zoning violation can be issued on the property.
And this does not come to city council, the design review board is the final arbiter within the city for this. And it only does apply to the Hotel Aiken piece of the property complex, of the physical plan, it doesn't apply to the motor court or the building that runs from Bee Lane East to Richland, excuse me, to Newberry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
I had another report, the, you've probably received query inquiries from residents, excuse me, from customers in our fire district that are not on city water, just wanted to provide some perspective. Staff, over the last year, we've been working very hard to identify parcels that have not been paying for fire protection but are within our fire limits, and along those lines, earlier this year, back in May and June, council approved charging all fire customers based on the value of their structure, independent of if they've been connected to city water. So for example, prior to, prior to this, folks that are on city water but not in the city, a residential property owner was paying $41 a month for fire protection, that increased modestly to 45. There, we discovered to date that there's 2,221 parcels that were not on city water but within our fire district that were not getting billed, so we began billing those customers in July, the, the $45 a month, and we will begin also, that, of those, 956 of those accounts are residential properties, we've also identified another 1,195 parcels of that 2221 that have, that are vacant, they are just land, unimproved land, and those, as part of our rate structure that was approved, they're gonna be billed $15 a quarter, starting in October, so for a total of $60 a year. So I've wanted to provide, I guess, some additional background, we discussed this, I guess, at two ordinance readings, and touched on it very briefly, I think, in our budget process, but I did want to provide that report. And finally, as you know, two weeks. Right, thank you, $45 is the maximum, it is based on the value of the property, but I did want to report one other thing, two weeks ago, I shared with you the petition that was received about council considering banning smoking in the alley area, and we've received that obviously as information, and I think at this time, unless council directs staff otherwise, we were gonna receive it as information, but as we kind of worked through this, all the issues associated with the pandemic, we wanted to kind of work through the, get, get a little further with some light at the end of the tunnel with the pandemic before we consider bringing that to council in the form of a work session, and if council so desires, some sort of ordinance for consideration. So those are the reports at this time.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Stuart a question?
Certainly, Ms. Gregory?
Stuart, oh, sorry, Mr. Beedenbaugh, I, regarding the fire fees.
Yes.
You and I have spoken at length about this, and when we voted for the fees, obviously, it made perfect sense to me because we need to make those adjustments. I have heard from a couple people, but one in particular, which is Ms. Ivy, which you're very familiar with, and I just want to make sure that we really revisit her specific situation, which is a little bit a misnomer than all of the other categories that Mr. Beedenbaugh brought to our attention tonight, and in her case, she is not receiving any city services, correct?
That is correct, that individual, she only gets fire, and there's individual, those are the, what we call.
The misnomers, kind of the.
The suburban that are not on city water or sewer, but within our fire district, because as we know, the city limits are not the same as the fire district, which is not the same as our water district boundaries.
And in her case, she would be paying $540 a year, which is more than what city taxes would, would encompass, so it doesn't really make sense to me, and she really does plead a very good case, and so I would like for staff to bring to council how many people fall into that category that Ms. Ivy is in, and, and how much that is, how much total money does that encompass, and maybe if we can revisit it and see about options to addressing her fire fees, because she's in the county, gets zero services, and she's paying a significant amount of money, so it just doesn't really make sense, if we can just revisit that, that would be great.
We can do that, and I do want to add, I guess, it's the, we will have that information with folks that are only in our fire district, not on water or sewer, and residential bill at the maximum rate of $45.
I think there was more than just the one, I had one like that, also.
I received, and have corresponded, either via electron, email or phone, with about four individuals, I suspect we'll get more when more bills, you know, continue to go out.
You know, when we, when we were, when Jim Lakes, where I live at, was in, in the county, I was paying, I think it was 400 and something dollars a year, fire protection.
Did you have city services?
Uh.
Would have had city water.
I didn't have city sewer, I had city water.
City water.
And there are still Jim Lakes.
So I was paying double water, and I was paying four, I wish I could remember exactly what it was, but.
We had Jim Lake sewer.
Yeah, yeah, we had our own sewer.
Took over the sewer.
But I wasn't paying city taxes, I was paying probably more, in fact, it was cheaper for me to come in the city than it.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, like, if they're, if they're partaking in city services, then it makes perfect sense that the 540 or the 45 max, but if there's, there's no connection whatsoever, and yes, fire fees are very important, I just, I just think, it does seem a little bit high because it's more than city taxes, and so that part of it just doesn't jive in my brain, but I just want to revisit, if we can just revisit, I'd just like to know how many people fall into that category, that takes, that have zero services from the city but pay that max rate, and how much, how much money that is actually attached to, and if there's an adjustment that can be made, and we still have to make up for it, so how do we, how would we compensate for that, so, it's just questions.
Well, a lot of this is money that we've never collected before.
Correct.
That is correct, and I mean, this individual, or this property is one that, I don't.
That did get fire protection but never paid before, or if we're not going into bridge with that.
And I want to emphasize, though, these individual, these parcels that have not been billed before, due to the, the good work of our staff in finding these parcels, we're not gonna retroactively bill anyone, I mean, basically, it's just started July 1st, I spoke to an individual in Aiken Estates that purchased a home in 2016, for some reason, they were never billed for fire service, the prior owner was, and this individual started getting a bill, and, you know, once I explained, they didn't like it, but they certainly understood it.
Sure, and, and I think we need to recuperate this money, like, I think, I'm not saying, let's just not charge it, we have to figure out a way to charge it, but.
Well, they wrote fire protection, and probably their insurance would reflect having fire, or the lack thereof, if they didn't have it, it'd be.
They're an ISO two.
So, and I think.
Chris Cal didn't, said that it did not make that much difference, because, but Stuart was really great in working with her, but she went down the list, you know, she checked, and it didn't make that much difference in her fire protection, she's paying more than she would if she were in the city, you're kind of, like you said, at a loss to what to say to. to say to this person because, you know...
Well, we'll get the answer.
This is the same person. She was concerned about her budget.
That, that's correct.
And the impact on her, on, on her budget. She was, it was a surprise.
I think, I think she's called all of us.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Eric, would be, and, uh, this individual has done a lot of research.
She has.
If, if, if staff would, uh, put together the answers to Ms. Gregory's questions and...
But I couldn't tell them that.
And, and share them with all council, we'd appreciate that.
I would be glad to. And, um, I'll let Ms., the individual know.
Thank you, Stewart. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
And that's all I have tonight.
Very good. With that, I would accept a motion for, to adjourn?
Please respectfully submit.
Mr. Giardo, is there a second? Mr. Walts, all those in favor, please stand up.
Oh, yeah.